We're going to call the meeting to order. So this is committee of the whole meeting for administration and finance. Uh, for January the thirteenth, twenty twenty, and also budget meeting number one of the twenty twenty budget cycle. And, um, first item on, second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Looking for a mover in a second. Counselor Cameron and Counselor Hunter, those in favor? Motion is carried. Item number three on the agenda, disclosure of community interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening? No disclosures, and minutes will so reflect. Item number four is business from the previous committee of the whole meeting minutes. Anybody have anything to bring forward? Questions? Now, this was a combined meeting, and the same minutes will be before us at the PW meeting next Wednesday, or this Wednesday, this Wednesday, this week. So I have a question, I'll leave it go until then, but just a question with regard to these minutes. Page five of six, and on page five of six, uh, we talked about, uh, preparing and submitting an application under the twenty nineteen intake prior to the January twenty-second deadline. Are we going to be able to meet that deadline for the application? I think that's for the county road two project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, will we be able to meet that deadline?
Meet that deadline, very much. Just to follow up on that item. And is anybody else, if anything else, hearing none, move on? And, uh, we have no delegations or presentations, so I'm on item number six, which is discussion items, draft, service, delivery, review, committee priorities. So everybody, I think, did submit a couple of items, and, uh, I'm just wondering, uh, well, the clerk has just circulated them, deputy clerk has just circulated them as she received them, I think, uh, and is there anybody that would like to speak to this? Counselor Hunter?
Uh, reading, reading them over. Uh, what I can see with most of the committee members here are, our IT was one of the main priorities all the way through different programs, where we all agreed on the same program or not. Most of them are all IT-based programs, and I was in favor of the IT work being done, too. I think one thing we should seriously take into consideration, if we're going to purchase, spend money on purchasing IT programs to get, get it in, the staff workload our staff has here, here now, and I'm not by any means saying they're not capable of integrating some of these IT programs in, but for expedience and seeing that we have modernization funds available, I really think it'd behold us to consider contracting a full-time IT person for at least a year in here to work with our staff and see that these all get put in, and, and any glitches or stuff comes up, there's somebody right there to do it. I know we work with one, one service, but I think we've all tried to get a hold of them sometimes, and, uh, they're not the easiest ones to get a hold of sometimes when you want something, something fixed, and if you do a little glitch or something, putting something in, if you have an experienced IT person there that knows what they're, they're doing, that can correct that, you can save an awful lot of time doing it and money. I know it'll cost us some money for a good IT person to be on thing, but I think if we're going to go the IT route of developing all these programs, I really think we need to, to seriously consider a full-time person here for at least a year, and maybe with the option to extend it for a couple of months until we get the stuff up and running.
Putting him under contract?
Yeah, hired, just a contract person.
Him was a, I'm sorry, what was his? We'll say general neutral expression, but a person, yes. So you raised an interesting point, which is, is to the execution of the, of the concept. I think, uh, what I'm going to be looking for, um, well, first of all, I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, that we had a, a sort of a common thread amongst ourselves, and, uh, is there anybody that wouldn't agree with the fact that, uh, developing our, our computer system, our IT technology, uh, to a little bit more robust, um, a little bit more robust of a program that will integrate more functionality? Is there anybody that wouldn't agree with that being one of the priorities that's come out of this?
Would the staff agree with that, too?
Well, I'll get to that in a minute.
Okay, sorry.
I think, I think that was, uh, Mr. Mayor, one of the highlights of the service delivery report was that our systems aren't, uh, matured, and they're not integrated, and so on. And I think Counselor Hunter is raising a very good point. I think before we say what charged off in that, and I think that's probably where we'll go end up, um, it really, you can't just inundate the staff with all of these different modules. It'll just create chaos. I think the staff should look at what modules are missing or not, not available to us yet, and make a kind of a priority list, which ones they wanted, would want to bring in first and integrate into the system in a orderly fashion. And then, report back to us on those, that, that situation, and then suggest, okay, maybe we bring an IT guy in to, or person in to, to help in that integration process, because not only is the technical aspect involved, but there's also a big learning curve here, you know?
Yeah.
Things are going to come in, and, uh, a lot of new stuff, and, uh, the staff has to really, you know, feel warm with it before they can, you know, we can get the benefit of it.
So I guess, I guess what I'm hearing, uh, and, uh, you know, and, you know, as was pointed out during the presentation, during the, the service delivery review presentation, we don't want to get really ahead of ourselves. The, 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 the actual service delivery review report will be finalized. Uh, I don't know whether we've got the final drafts yet or not, but that final draft will come to council on, what's the date, the twenty-something?
January twenty-seventh.
January the twenty-seventh, and at that point, assuming that all five council members at this table, uh, don't change their minds between now and then, that report will be accepted, received and reviewed and accepted. And then I think what we'll be looking for, in, in view of what we've seen, uh, with the input that we've had here today, what we'll be looking for is, is a staff recommendation to come to us, uh, in rather short order. What modules, uh, do you see as, uh, being available and, and being integratable, and in what sequence would you like to, would you recommend that these be done? I mean, we're going to need a staff report to tell us what to do and how to do it. We may need assistance to help us do it, and that's what you two gentlemen are talking about. So I think, in my mind, that sort of sets a direction, uh, from the service delivery review, even though we're not etching that direction in stone, uh, I would look forward to some sort of a, a briefing note or recommendation coming forward, uh, either at the same meeting that we received in the report, or very quickly after that, uh, as to, uh, you know, a suggestion towards action. And I think, you know, you make the points that we do have the modernization money, that's what it was for, and it's, it's well, uh, well-positioned.
There's, there's no deadline that we have to spend that by a certain time?
Well, there is no deadline, but one of the things that I keep hearing is that at some point, we're going to be asked to give an accounting.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah, that's reasonable, and I, I mean, I, I think in my mind, uh, so far, we've been very, very reasonable and accountable to what we've allocated dollars for, and this certainly follows and flows through on that. So wanted to have that discussion. I know we're maybe a bit early, because we haven't done the final approval of the report, but I'm sure that it will, it'll consume council without any, without any hiccups on the twenty-seventh.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in addition to Counselor Hunter's comments, uh, I seem to think that, uh, maybe the fleet management thing is a module as a, as well. I don't know if you would include that.
And so is the fuel.
Yeah.
And I see both of those.
That's to come through from several of the reports.
Okay, well, I don't want to prolong that discussion, because I think these, uh, these submissions that, that you folks submitted speak for themselves, and staff has them, and, uh, I think we can regard that as, as a sort of a, at least, uh, tangible sign of our current thinking.
So, Mr. Chair, just before we leave this, so at, at the next minute, finance meeting, we'll, we'll have a report back with, with sort of an IT strategic plan that I'll look at.
Yes.
Of modules and...
And that admin finance will be the week, the two weeks after the council meeting.
Two, two weeks after.
Yeah, all right, so that gives you almost a month now. Okay, so, uh, going on then to item seven A, uh, which is the fourth quarter bylaw report, and, uh, we have the report in front of us, and, um, how do I want to deal with this? I'll open the floor for questions first.
Questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, my, uh, I'm reading the annual, uh, report, January first to December thirty-first, and I'm, I'm just going up along the, the very top, uh, line, January, which would be January, uh, two thousand and nineteen, and just, just for instance, what I'm saying, looking here now, a couple of things just caught my eye. One was parking, thirty-two, which I'm assuming was thirty-two either complaints or stops or calls, but under the January activity log, that's not shown. Also, the very next column, under two called zoning, they're not shown on the activity log for, for January. And I, and I'm just, um, I, I'm, I'm just wondering why.
Okay, so, uh, let me, uh, can you just explain how you're relating those two things?
Okay, well, under the, on the enforcement annual report?
Yep.
The very first line item, January.
Yep, I got the thirty-two and I got the two.
Okay, well, where does it show on the January activity log?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Is, is the next one? I, I just...
When you go down the activity log, everything is clean yards, clean yards, clean yards, and you don't see the word parking.
I don't see parking, I don't see zoning, um, uh, I do see illegal dumping, I, I, I see that.
There's one parking, but it's, um, is, where is it? Cardinal, two home cars.
Sorry, what line are we on?
On the January activity log.
Two thirty's the line.
Two thirty, that is the line.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I do, I do see one.
Doesn't amount to thirty-two.
Yeah, but thirty-two was, it, you know, we're, we're, we seem to be thirty-one lines short.
Yeah.
Or, and, plus the two zoning, which would be thirty, thirty-three, so, I, I, so I'm, I'm just curious as to why they're, there may be a good reason why they're not on the log.
So to the C A L?
To the C A L.
Thank you. So I, I'm going to o- only assume that, uh, those thirty-two are, are parking tickets, either warnings or, um, uh, tickets issued, and they're not necessarily specific to a, a, a property or an area. So that may be why they, why, why they're not, like, it... Mr. Chair, sorry? They wouldn't be on the activity log.
Why would they not? I guess that's my question, why are they not on the activity log?
We're, Tim?
I mean, to me, if it's parked, we'll just, we'll just deal with the parking for a moment.
Sure.
He's got to stop his vehicle, he's got to go and talk to the people, or ticket the, or ticket the, uh, ticket the, uh, the, the car, and, uh, like, why wouldn't, why, I just don't understand why it wouldn't be on the activity log, because now, with going by this, we see this once a quarter, so we have to wait for three months before we see that that work was done. Uh, just, I don't mean to nit, nitpick about it, but it's just, it just doesn't seem to balance.
What was the nature of the work that was done? If it was a ticket issued, if it was a ticket issued, then...
Especially the zoning, I mean, what, what happened, you know?
Could it be as simple as the computer isn't picking up something, like an Excel spreadsheet or something like that?
Well, no, ti- typically, if, if a bylaw enforcement officer is going out at three in the morning to, to, to check for, for, for winter parking, it, it, it's either going to be a ticket or, or a warning. It's not, you're not going to specify the thirty-two locations to, through, throughout the township where, where you put a potential, uh, a, a, a warning on or, or a ticket, because it gets, gets tracked through, through a different process.
Well, anyway, not to, not, I know you don't want to belabor it, but I think you're raising it interesting, because, I mean, when it comes right down to it, our, our whole, um, point all the way through has been, how do we, how do we measure the effort here? And there was a, one of our discussions that we were going to start assigning, um, incident numbers to these, um, what do they, what does he call them?
Complaints?
Files, incident, incident, or, um, serial numbers to the files, uh, so that we could track the amount of effort that was being spent on the files. Uh, so let me ask a sort of a back question. On this, um, I'm just, just looking for a minute at this January bylaw activity log. Um, how is that produced? Is that produced by hand, or does it come out of, uh, some input that, does it print out a report from something that's already inputted? Does anybody, how, how is this being created?
It's, it's created through a Word document at this particular stage.
Okay, so, which means it has to be created, um, cell by cell by cell, then, right?
Correct.
Okay, so again, we have the question of, uh, we're not able to integrate from the field into a program that will produce a report.
Uh, so, so through the chair, we, 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 we are working on that, and we are, uh, making some leaps and bounds, uh, but there, there are still some items that, um, that, that are not in there as, as of yet, so we're hoping that this first quarter of twenty twenty, we should be able to produce that report from, uh, from the citywide program.
Do you have a follow?
I do not, uh, I, I don't want to belabor it, but, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I, it looks like improvement is on the way, I'm, I'm pleased, I'm pleased with that.
Counselor Hunter?
I just have one thing that you, you brought up, Mr. Mayor, about, uh, signing incident numbers to file numbers for these, we're starting a new year, can we not, uh, have our bylaw officer start putting numbers, file numbers on, on these to start the year in, even if it is done manually?
So, so through, so through the chair, with, uh, with utilizing the citywide system, it will generate a, a work order or a tracking number moving forward, so that should be able to be put right on the, on the report.
Really, we can't tell, we see fifteen yards, and we don't know whether that's fifteen different ones or the same one that he's been to fifteen times, so...
So the, when would we, so the first quarterly report from twenty twenty would be due sometime in, in the middle of April. So hopefully, we see something by that, by that, that first report. Other, are there other questions that pertain to this report?
If, pardon me, if the, uh, incident numbers are put on there, instead of having, like, one thirty-two item on there, would you have thirty-two listed with numbers on them? I mean, it, it, I wonder if it's going to create just a volume of paper?
Yeah, no, your point.
For, for, for instance, with, if the, the desire is for any time that the bylaw enforcement officer issues a parking ticket, that you want a complete separate incident number, it's going to get lened free.
That's... Yeah, and I don't know that we want to get down in the, in the weeds that deep, but it would be helpful to know how many parking tickets were issued, you know? And I know that someplace in this report, it indicates that, um, these, these offenses resulted in generating a small revenue for the township, but that's not necessarily true, because we don't get any revenue from any of this until, number one, the ticket is paid at the provincial offenses court, and then, even at then, there's a delay before, before we see that cash, and we don't recognize, just, if you don't mind, to the treasurer, we don't recognize the cash from tickets until we receive it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so in other words, we're not...
Through the chair, we have received a lot more revenue through payment of fines already this year.
We have?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, now, when you say this year, twenty nineteen?
In twenty nineteen, yes.
So you can see an effect?
We have seen a, a large increase in that revenue line, for sure.
Oh, well, okay, so there's a, there's a signs that not only are we issuing the tickets, but that the tickets are being paid.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, but again, uh, we, as the issuing entity, do we get a report from the provincial offenses court that shows us the outstanding tickets that haven't been paid?
I can probably answer that a little better through the chair. Um, it's twofold, we issue tickets, we have two steps initially, set fine, where they can come into our office, plead, uh, that they're technically guilty, pay it right up front, or they can plead not guilty and have it go to the court.
Yep.
There, if they plead guilty and pay it, it goes through provincial offenses. It's a very slow process with provincial offenses, we usually don't see any remittance of a fine that's paid, say, in July, until November.
Yep.
It's horrendously slow. Um, and we don't get the full proceeds, because POA takes a portion, the court takes a portion. So we do see a reduced amount of revenue in those cases, and then there are also other cases where somebody pleads guilty, but with an explanation.
Yep.
So we see a reduction in those revenues as well, so something that could be a three-hundred-dollar fine may be reduced to a hundred dollars. So it's hard to take a ticket and say, we're going to get this exact amount of money out of it.
The, and, and, and the, and the thing that we know from counties, because we administer the provincial offenses court at the county level, and the thing that we know is that our receivables continue to escalate big time. I mean, our receivables on our provincial offenses are in the millions, not a million, not two million, but many millions. And, uh, with, as a matter of fact, one of the meetings that we all have at Roma is with the attorney general, begging for more mechanisms to be able to collect outstanding fines. So, so can I take it from the explanation that we just heard from the deputy clerk, can I take it that, that the increase in revenues that we've seen from tickets mean the results from people bringing those tickets right to our counter?
Yes.
Oh, is that interesting?
Quite a few.
Okay, so just a question, do we at our counter, do we have any kind of a mechanism whereby we know that this sequence of tickets were issued, it's, the list is here on the desk, and these seven people have just come in and paid this one, this one, this one, and this one?
Yeah, we, we tracked that.
Okay, so we tracked that, so then we must have a list of the unpaid's.
On our system, yes.
We do?
They may be paid through POA, and we just haven't received the money, but...
Okay, but the ones that are paid at our counter, we know they're paid.
Yeah.
And the ones that aren't paid at our counter, we know they're someplace else.
Potential.
They're, they're gone to POA.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll just flag this then for staff, if I may, it would be helpful for me, as the representative at United Counties, to have that statistic on a, some kind of a basis, just so that I could report it to my fellow mayors, just want you to know, because not all municipalities issue tickets, but if we're issuing them, it would be helpful to report that, you know, in, in this time period, we issued nine, ninety-six tickets, ninety of them have been paid at our counter, and we've submitted six to you for collection, and we're watching those six. Not that we are, but we can say that. Okay, uh, other questions with regard to this report? Mr. Bradley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I've, I've been looking at these for six years now, when they come through, and quarterly reports are shorter, of course, but this is about ten pages, two-sided. Have we ever asked the question of, what do we want to know from this? I mean, there's a lot of detail in here. And I don't know, like, is it really critical that we at this level know this, or have we defined really what we want to know?
Answer to that question is probably no.
Maybe we should think about doing that, there's a lot of work put in to produce this thing. I'm, I'm sure the bylaw fellow's going to have this anyway, because he's got to do a job, okay? But, but I, I don't know, like, we get the odd question come out of it, but I, I don't know if we've ever defined what we really want to see at this level.
Well, and of course, the way the whole thing started, because you were very interested to know what effect we were having with the enforcement of our clean yards by law.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We really wanted to know that, but I mean, he's our bylaw enforcement officer, he's enforcing more than just the clean yards by law. So I mean, this gives us an overall picture of what he's doing, and what is it, how many hours a week, ten hours a week?
Maximum.
Maximum ten hours a week, and we're getting this kind of result, I think that tells us something about the...
I think, I think there's value in, in the work he's doing, don't get me wrong, in that sense. I just wonder if there sort of isn't kind of an executive summary concept that we could use that would tell us that we're moving ahead, or we're stagnated, or whatever, uh, and, uh, versus having this kind of detail. I mean, I know we only get this once a year, but still, it's quite a bit of...
Well, we get the monthly activities reports, we get like three months at a time.
Yeah.
Did you, sorry, did you want to hear?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, just, um, with, through the new software, will it provide the same amount of detail at, at a little greater ease? Like the citywide module for, for bylaw enforcement?
It's, it's, it's still, it, it's still a little bit of a work in, 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 in progress. I, I, I think it could be produced a little bit easier, but what I'm, what I'm wondering about is, um, just to, to pick up on, on Mr. Bradley's point, you know, would, would, would a chart or a graph, or, or something of that nature, with a, with summaries of, of, of these items be, be, be a little easier? You can gauge what, what that activity is that way.
Well, I, well, I think what I would like to know, and just off the top of my head, is I'd like to know the number of, like, by category, okay, but the number of incidents that occurred, just a statement, you know, clean yards, thirty-six incidents, fourteen resolved, or something, you know? And you say, and then we can talk about, well, what are we doing to resolve the ones that aren't, and so on, but I don't know if you need, like, you get the detail, where does this go when I go home, into the circular file?
Mr. Mayor, based, based on the internal controls that we heard about today, that, you know, just being looked after, and surely there's an executive summary that could be provided to council that would eliminate the reams of paper that we get.
Yeah, but let's not go down that rabbit hole, because paper, I don't care about how much paper it is, we've got to have a, we've got to have enough information that we know what the effort is here. You know, I mean, and you, the, I mean, you, I'm going back to your original point, he's preparing his stuff for his own use anyway, he has to be, so he's just giving it to us, which is...
It's a copy, I know, but it's like fifty, or five, five persons, seven persons copy, but, and, you know, we get into the discrepancy that Counselor Hunter mentioned, it could be just, if it's a Word-type document, it could be just a click of a, of a mouse that got the thing wrong, and, and by the time you read this thing, you didn't pick the error up, you know, that's, that's, I don't, maybe that's an oversimplification, but it's possible under that type of a system. So I don't know what the citywide system looks like, or what the reports would look like, but I, I don't know, I think the level of detail is maybe a little bit over the top for what we need.
Well, I know what, when I looked at this, one of the things that I appreciated was, when I got to, what month was it? I got to the August report, I could see that he's opened, uh, fourteen new files, and I'm thinking to myself, okay, he's opened fourteen new files in forty hours of effort, and he has zero closed. So fourteen new files in forty hours of effort with no closures, that tells me something. I can look at the...
What, what does it tell you? What, what does it tell you?
Well, if you're opening fourteen new files and not closing any, and I took it from the previous, uh, July report, that there were at least five files carried forward, so that meant that he had nineteen files that he was active on in that month. So he had nineteen active files and zero closed.
Well, if you had a results-oriented organization, you would say that if you open ten files, we expect that you're gonna have two closed every month, or three closed, whatever, you know, whatever the target is.
Yeah, so then you go, you know, when you go now to, uh, September, you see that he's opened seven new files and closed four, so, you know, I mean, it tells me something about effort. And then I look at October, ten new files open, eleven closed. So now you're gaining ground, you're closing more than you're opening.
Yeah, but, and again, we have to tailor that to the expectation that it's forty hours a month, or.
Yeah.
A week a month, equivalent to a week a month, maybe.
Yeah.
And those objectives that staff set have to be realistic, that they can be met, you know, so, and, uh.
And how do we, how do we assess on the ground the effect that we're having in the community?
Well, the thing that, and I think Counselor Hunter brought this up, not only tonight, but in previous, uh, years. If you look at the clean yards and you count up, say, in any given month, the clean yard for a location like Spencerville, you might have twenty clean yards, uh, types here. You don't know how many are repeats of the same yard. So, I mean, he could be devoting a lot of time to one or two properties, and it looks like there's a ton of problems with the clean yards, and it's really only two yards.
So how do we tease that, how do we tease that information out of the reports?
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know the details.
If you start getting instant numbers, you're just gonna have an instant, instant number there, you're gonna be able to pick it up, so. But I, I get that maybe we're creating paper here, but you and I have both sat on councils where we got no information hardly from our bylaw, and we were getting complaints all the time. You can't really answer your rate payers if you don't really know what you're, what you're feeding up, so.
I think, no, it's a serious issue, don't get me wrong in that sense. I just think that the report should be one that which five counselors can look at this and say, clean yards, this is where we are, this is where we were a year ago, we're making improvement, and not worrying about, is it two, is it the same property coming up three times, or five times, or whatever? Like, that's, let them do that, that's their job. And I, I think that's the objective, is that we're making headway and making an improvement in township in these yards categories, so you have to devise a report that would give you that information, that's what I'm saying. And I don't think, I don't know the system well enough to be able to say you should do this with a report. But the people at the, down at the level that are doing it, maybe we need to communicate what we, our expectations are, or our objectives, so that then they can sit and design something that gives us the information we want.
Well, and I know that we've been asked many times, what is it you want, what is it you want, what is it you want? Uh, what is, again, I can articulate what we don't want, going back to your point. We don't want so little information that we don't know what.
We don't know what's happening.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So this is better than what we have had in the past, may not be perfect, but as Schwarzkopf said, a good plan today is better than a perfect plan tomorrow.
Yeah.
Counselor Cameron?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, most, most of my questions have been answered, and I was just going to say that I, you know, it wasn't that long ago when we were getting handwritten reports from, from the bylaw officer. This is, this is head and shoulders over that type of reporting system. And, uh, I, I just, I don't wanna, I really don't wanna belabor the fact that I'd like to see more detail. I guess, I guess the fact is that back when we were getting handwritten details, the bylaw officer was here, and we could say, what was this incident, or what was that incident? Now we don't have that, where, where I think a lot of this can be cleared up if, if we could ask the individual just what happened.
Yes, but again, that, that's a function of the change in the governance model.
That, that is true, I, I understand.
And the governance model has changed to the point where we work through a CAO, and we, and we have to ask the questions of the CAO, the CAO digs out the answers and reports back. And that also speaks to your point as well, because I think the CAO and the rest of the staff here are the kind of conversation that's gone on here, and I think, you know, if there's a, there's a, a, a gap there where the staff can, uh, make suggestions as to, well, we're giving it to you in this format, would you rather see it in this format? And, I mean, so there's an opportunity for staff to respond to the concerns that are being raised at the table without us necessarily trying to articulate to the I and the T, with the I's dotted and the T's crossed, what kind of report we want. Now, I'm gonna throw the question back at you. If you can formulate a report, or articulate what you think the report should look like, I'm happy to have it come before this committee for review.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that rather than, you know, striking some kind of committee to do something, I think the CAO can say, with proposals, I mean, I think they know what we're looking for, you know, and you can test different hypotheses.
And formats.
Yeah, and formats, and you can say, well, okay, here's three or four different options, how we can present this stuff. And here's the advantage here, and so on, and then let us pick at it and say, well, okay, this seems to be the most preferred, why don't we go with that?
Yeah, well, that's what committee work is about.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't mind working with the CAO if he wants me to do that, and work on something that would be better, but, uh, you know, that, he may already know the answer to that question.
Okay, um, I'm a vote, are there any other follow-ups here before I move on?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to kind of wait and see what city program brings to us, how it operates, before we try to change too much, and if they're working on it, I'd just like to give them a chance to bring that report to us, and off the citywide thing, and see what it, what it looks like.
Looks like.
Looks like, as far as the parking and, though, though, I know there's a lot of parking tickets being issued, but maybe they can look at such a thing as regionalizing, but X number of parking tickets in Spencerville area, Johnstone area, Cardinal area, rural area, or something, just an instant number when he's doing, I assume he does a walk-through in a, in a town when he's there, maybe he just puts a one incident number down, parking in Spencerville, fifteen.
Tickets.
Tickets or something. That's about all, we don't really need to know every single person, it was just an area, if we're, we see that there's thirty tickets issued in Spencerville, well, I better get some information out to, better to the people, you're gonna get a ticket if you don't get your car off the road, so.
Well, and see, what, what I worry about when I, Counselor Cameron has gone back, and I'm just gonna go back one last time, not to belabor this, but Counselor Cameron refers to the annual report, the, so that's the first page, January one to December thirty-one, and he points out parking thirty-two. That may have been thirty-two notices left on windshield, we don't know that. We, we don't know what thirty-two means. Okay, so let's not, uh, let's not beat this horse to death. Uh, moving on to seven B, although some might argue we've already done that.
Yeah.
The group benefit marketing survey report, so this is a very interesting report. Uh, any comments about this?
Just, if I may ask a question, uh, Mr. Mayor, through the, through the chair, uh, I'm just, it says, the plan has averaged three-point-five increase in the last three years, renewals which include a six-point-six-three proposed for twenty-twenty.
Eight-point-six-three.
Eight-point-six-three, yes, uh, I'm, I'm just curious as to why it's so high?
Proposed high.
Proposed, proposed high, yes.
So through the CAO to the treasurer, I guess?
Yes.
Whatever you choose.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I can answer that specifically as to why the Great West Life came back with a higher value. Um, the industry certainly is not indicating that, um, all the other, uh, providers quoted quite a bit less, and so, uh, Pigman went back to Great West Life, originally they were closer to fifteen percent, and he went back to them with the, uh, industry, uh, numbers, and they carved it down to eight-point-six-three.
I see, okay.
So why they had it as high as it is, there's really no explanation, that's just.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so the three-point-five percent increase, it says, the plan has averaged a three-point-five percent increase, that's increase in premium, right?
Correct.
Yeah, increase in premium. Mr. Bradley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, when I read this, um, paper, this briefing document, uh, the question that came to my mind was, uh, Great West is a business, they want revenue, um, and thirty-seven thousand a month is not bad money. So why would they have jacked the premium, I don't know, but wouldn't it be, and maybe this has happened, uh, has there been a, a contact made with Great West and said, look, you're gonna lose this contract if you don't bring your price in line? I mean, this is a business, you negotiate.
Yes, but that's Pigman's job, is it not?
Yes, and as I just actually said previously, is that, uh, that Pigman did take back the results of the survey, the market quotes that he got to Great West Life, they initially had it at fifteen percent, and actually dropped it to eight-point-six-three, so that was the, that was their bottom line. So they had their chance.
They had their chance twice.
They had their chance, yeah, to, to quote first, to go to the market, come back, and only reduce, uh, any still bills, there's areas where they, uh, they should be able to come down. There's no experience, uh, within, uh, the organization that indicates we should be at the level that they're indicating at, so that's why they're making the recommendation to go to Sun Life.
Okay, so can I just pick up on that point, uh, just so that I've got it very clear in my mind, and I've asked the question? There was no increase, significant increase in our claims experience?
No.
Okay, so it wasn't a question of, we had heavy claims. Is there any possibility that there was claims experience that Pigman knew about that we didn't know about?
No, they give us a pretty, uh, ident, each year when they do an annual review of our, uh, of our experience, we're given a booklet with outlines all of the experiences in terms of the number of drugs, name the drug, and they tell us how many, you know, how many, uh, claims were made on that drug, the dollar value that was claimed, we know the total dollar claimed compared to the premiums that were paid, you know, we, we are, we're given a complete booklet of, of, uh, of where we're at.
And is that booklet, that report booklet, does that, is that produced by Great West Life?
Yes, that would be produced to Great, by Great West Life and given to Pigman.
And then Pigman gives it to us?
Correct.
So just a question, if I may, have you, as the treasurer, have you noticed any, um, have you noticed any, uh, any trends that might have scared Great West Life away from the account?
No, it's not, as I say, Pigman Bill was over to see us, he didn't really understand where Great West Life was coming from with some of their premium, uh, they were really quite surprised that the, that we were, that they were increasing as much as they were.
You'd have to look at their balance sheet, I guess, to see where the problem is.
So deputy mayor, and then who's after deputy mayor, I've been a counselor, Dillabah.
Through the chair, uh, so, so in reading it, no substantial differences between the two plans? It's actually comparing apples to apples?
To some extent, although Sun Life has a few, uh, a little difference, a few differences. Uh, one, uh, notable one that I can remember is that currently we hold a vision, we do our own vision care within, uh, for, for everybody, and, uh, Sun Life offers the eye, uh, exams as part of the benefit package where, uh, Great West Life never did, so it, the vision care that we offer here, they would have to, like, some of their, um, uh, claims would be for the eye, eye, um, exam itself. So then the, you know, if you have glasses, then you're kind of cutting a, a little bit of money off of that to part for your glasses or contacts, so that was a little bit better.
Yeah, a bit better, right?
Yeah, that.
And, and, I mean, um, is it, uh, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars over two years in premium savings, is that?
Yeah, yeah, over a two-year period, and now that's with the port as well as the township, because the port's involved in this, uh, uh, group benefit plan as well, it's a combination. So it's about a fifty-fifty split-ish between, uh, the port's, um, portion of the premium and as well as ours.
Yeah, and that's predicated on some pretty big increases over the next couple of years.
Exactly.
Counselor Dillabah?
It's like, you know, um, you're talking about this pavement, whose pavement, is he our rep, or who's our insurance rep? Is that what he is?
A broker, yes.
So he's a broker?
Yeah.
So he doesn't work for Great West Life, he's a broker, and he goes out and gets other insurance? So obviously, Great West Life has problems, other fields, where that's why they're, they gotta get their premium or something.
They have just been recently bought by Canada Life, or changed their name to Canada Life, so they might have done some amalgamation and took on some, uh, book of business that made it, you know, that they're trying to recoup, uh, money from another book of business.
Counselor Hunter, and then I'm gonna be looking for a mover and a seconder for the recommendation.
I think it's just common business practice there, that, you know, school board switches back and forth between these two companies every few or four years, they switch back and forth, it's just a competitive business. Sun Life has been a supplier, your business is acting in, and you've pretty well got to negotiate every few years or so, you gotta, you gotta check with them, because somebody's always willing, willing to try to take the business away. We save a lot of money here, a year ago, we switched banks after being with the Royal for years here, here, when we saved a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, and we switched for four, five years, and then all of a sudden, the Royal could do a whole lot better again, so.
Okay, you're moving, Counselor Dillabah is moving.
I second.
Counselor Deschamps is seconding, further discussion, if any, those in favor of the recommendation? Recommendation is carried. And now I'm going to item number seven C, which is the munisub security system application, and there is a recommendation here as well, and I think the briefing note speaks succinctly to the issue. And, uh, actually, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the recommendation. Okay, I have Counselor Hunter moving, and I have, uh, Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconding, discussion, if any? Hearing none, those in favor, recommendation is carried. And I'm going now to, uh, item number seven D, which is the twenty-twenty cost of living increase. And again, there's a recommendation, uh, and, um, I think what I'm gonna do this time, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, and then there'll be some discussion. I have a point or two I wanna raise, but I'll raise it after the recommendation is on the floor.
I'll move the recommendation.
Counselor, I saw Counselor, Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving, and Counselor Cameron seconding. Now, anybody else have any points to raise during the expansion, during the discussion? Counselor Dillabah?
Uh, I just have, I'm not gonna nitpick, but, uh, staff's getting a one-point-eight-nine percent increase, and our union staff, because they have a contract with us, they're getting one-point-seven-five. Is that gonna hurt us when, uh, we come up to negotiate our contract with our union staff in the future? Because they're gonna see this.
Well, it's only point-one-four difference to start with, but, uh, how, how long?
It's the same.
Yeah, how long is our, uh, how long do our collective agreements have to run at the one-point-seven-five?
Uh, this is the last year of the collective agreement, collective agreement comes due December thirty-first of this year.
Okay.
Of twenty-twenty.
Okay, uh, other questions, if any? I have, uh, just one question, uh, and that is the way it's portrayed. It says it's a revision to the expense reimbursement policy. Now, my understanding was that this is an adjustment to, looking at it from the elected official's point of view, to our honorariums. Am I, am I doing, am I? And I, and I'm quite prepared to sit here all night and split that hair. Because there's a difference being, uh, between an expense reimbursement policy and an honorarium. So, I'm taking it that what we're voting on here is the, is the adjustment of, from an elected point of view, we're talking about an adjustment to our honorariums, is that correct?
It is.
Okay, so, what does the expense re- reimbursement policy refer to then?
Uh, the, uh, expense reimbursement policy includes the, uh, cost of living adjustment for, for the honorariums on, on an annual basis.
Okay, so, within that policy, is an annual, is a clause that, um, is a clause which describes how our honorariums are adjusted annually. Is that what we're saying? Right, okay, so, the one point eight-nine will apply to honor honorariums and to other things within that policy. What else does it apply to within the policy? It applies to all of the non-union staff increases, is that correct?
It, it, it does fall under that expense reimbursement policy.
All right, any other questions here before I call the question on the recommendation? Okay, those in favor of the recommendation? Okay, the recommendation is carried.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I will make a correction on that. The, the increase for non-union staff, it falls into the personnel policy by law, twenty-fifteen, twenty-two.
Falls under the personnel law?
That's correct.
Okay, so...
It says here.
So, is it only the council honorariums that's covered under this expense reimbursement policy?
That's correct.
I guess what's bothering me is the fact that our honorariums are being confused with expenses. And it's a while since I've read the policy, so I don't wanna get into the, I don't wanna get down into the weeds on it, but I don't regard honorariums as a, as, 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 as expense reimbursement. Okay, so, moving on. Twenty-nineteen, uh, work in progress report. And again, there's a briefing note here with a recommendation, I'd like to have a mover and a seconder for the recommendation. Okay, councillor Cameron in seconder, and councillor, uh, Dillawatt. So, from the briefing note, I think basically two, uh, two projects are being whipped forward, if you can put it that way, to, for completion in twenty-twenty. Any discussion? Councillor Hunter?
I just have a question. We generally, uh, as a state here, we move the twenty-three thousand five hundred forward to make up part of the thirty thousand dollars yet. But according to the briefing note, we have, uh, fifteen thousand dollars outstanding yet to be paid with grants that have already been approved. So, that really leaves us only less than fifteen thousand next year to, uh, approve for anybody.
Quite possibly. We have not had a big uptake on the CIP grant, uh, applications, uh, in the five years that I've been in the municipality. We've whipped forward money, uh, annually. Yeah, so it's, uh, that's, you're, you're correct. If, if, if the individuals who have their grant applications out come back to be paid, then there'll be that much less to be actually applied for. But a lot of times, uh, when they apply, they don't actually, it takes them a time before they actually, uh, you know, use the money, so...
I, I re- I realize that point, but most years, in the years I've sat on council since, we didn't have that big of an uptake, but we didn't have quite that much already granted when we were carrying, carrying forward. We always had maybe three or four thousand dollars left to pay out or something, we're carrying forward, but I think when we're carrying twenty-three thousand forward, but technically, we're, we're, only have eight thousand of that that we're really carrying forward, I, I kinda question whether we shouldn't be making some kind of an adjustment there that, uh, on that holding, at least part of that money to, that we've already committed to pay out. We have a little bit more than just fifteen, less than fifteen thousand dollars that we can grant next year and keep. If we do get an uptake, we haven't got the money there to grant.
Can I, uh, can I follow up on your questions with another question to the treasurer? So, my follow-up would be something like this. So, if we whip twenty-three five hundred forward, and if we accept that fifteen thousand five thirty-four is committed, may or may not be spent, but it's committed. That leaves seven thousand nine in the pot for next year. Would we then not, as part of our twenty-twenty budget, um, beef that up to, to come to thirty again?
We do.
Yeah, so, so we beef it up to thirty?
Yeah, we're just beefing up the...
The seven, the seven thousand nine?
We're just wrote there now, we're just add, we're just gonna be adding the number fourteen thousand.
Yeah. Fourteen? Where do you get down?
Because you've already, that money, there's fifteen thousand being carried, carried, twenty-three thousand being carried forward.
Less fifteen committed.
Yeah.
That leaves only seven nine.
So, we'd have to take that into consideration when we, you know, we're just carrying twenty-three thousand over.
Yeah, now, for, presumably, as we get further along in the budget process, we would know to what extent we have to beef up to, to get from the seven thousand nine left to get up to thirty.
Yeah.
You know, because out of the fifteen that's committed, it might only be five spent. You see what I'm getting at? I think that's gonna be in a state of flux partway through the budget process. Am I correct?
Well, we, we have currently thirty thousand booked in as the expense, and the twenty-three five is the offsetting revenue. So, taxation's supporting the CIP grant money right now for sixty-five hundred dollars. That's all the taxation is supporting it. So, we, we can certainly, council can certainly look at that line item when, when it comes to that point in time and determine, uh, whether we need to increase it. I've seen the thirty thousand in, in that line item for quite a few years now, and, yes, this year we have potentially fifteen thousand to be paid out. But like I say, even if they apply during the year, a lot of times, people are not actually using, or like, getting the money rebated until after they spent their money. So, you know, we can always, we can always certainly come back to council if we see a huge uptake on the grant and, and revise where we find money.
Okay, but I think what councillor Hunter and I are referring to is that we're taking, um, the last line. There are four successful grant applications amounting to fifteen five thirty-four eighteen to be paid out.
Yes.
So, we're taking that as committed.
Correct.
But what you're saying to us is that that is a soft commitment and may or may not be claimed.
No, what I'm saying, sir, is that the other applicant, we don't know what other applications are coming through, and even if an application is made to the township, it doesn't always happen that that same, those same monies are spent out in the same year. These app, these monies here are over a couple of years, they're not actually something that was just done for twenty-twenty. They are past applications that people have not submitted, you know, like, haven't claimed their application.
In the fifteen five?
Yeah.
Oh, for goodness sakes.
And that's common. Somebody will do, you know, ask for CIP grant, and then it takes them time to do their, their project, and then they haven't actually submitted to us to, to get reimbursed.
Oh, so it sounds like it's a very fluid type of program?
Yeah, it's fluid, always happening.
Yeah, okay, well, I have a mover and a seconder for the recommendation. And basically, all of this recommendation does is carry forward the twenty-three five, and then the whole act, the whole question of what's in the pot for next year will be in other discussions at a later time. Councillor, uh, Mr. Radley?
Yeah, on the second item, it, we had the fifteen thousand in the nineteen budget for a study on Fire Station Two. That's the station in Chicago. And we didn't complete the study or, you know, for performing. Uh, we're gonna whip it, uh, a bit. We've already awarded a contract to do the drawings. I don't know how we can do the drawings if we haven't done the study.
We had a discussion about that today, I'm gonna let the CAO deal with this.
So, I don't know, just confusing me, maybe they can be cleared up with a simple explanation.
Sure. So, through, through, through the chair, I, I, I will attempt to, uh, to, to explain that, and, uh, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong. But part, part of, part of the study on the Fire Station Two will include plans and drawings a, a, as part of that, uh, finished part of the study.
So, would we be, would we be telling Colburn and Campbell to hold off until we get the study done, is that what we're gonna do?
They, uh, Colburn and Campbell are the, uh, are the architects.
Are they doing the study?
They're the ones doing the study.
Okay, now, this, today I was a little bit confused about exactly what's happening. Councillor Hunter?
Uh, I was confused too, because it said drawings and stuff, and I didn't know how we're doing drawings when, when we hadn't even decided whether we're, whether we're, uh, renovating the hall, building that we had or whether we're building a new one, so I don't know how we do drawings until a council makes that decision.
So, again, to the CAO.
If, if, if I may, uh, so, the, the plans and drawings will show the, uh, an, an option with respect to renovating the, the, the current building versus a new building.
Well, renovation, I don't know if we can get into that, but I don't know anything about it, so I'd be speaking off the top of my head, but...
It looks like you got it under control.
You're the chair, like, I see what you're saying, but I don't know why we'd be paying for any drawings until we have the study and council actually decide what we wanna do. Why would we pay for a drawing to renovate and a drawing for a new building both? And throw one of them away?
Well, because, because I think that fifteen thousand will be well spent with the drawings and plans so that council can take a look at it, review, uh, the pros and cons of whether it's a renovation, a major renovation, ver- versus a new building. I, I think if you're, you're talking about throwing away five thousand, it's, that's, I, I don't consider it throwing, throwing away five thousand. I consider it getting all the information out on the table so the council can make as informed a decision as possible. Because it's, it's a big item.
Well, okay, so, I think, um, what you're saying is that the information that we receive as a result of this fifteen thousand expenditure will give us two clear lines of sight forward.
It, it, it will certainly give you the two clear lines, and you'll have to decide on a direction.
Okay, so, I think that's, I think that's what we're being challenged at. Now, that's the way I read it.
So, so these will be conceptual drawings?
Correct.
Versus working drawings?
Yeah.
Great, yeah, that's good.
Okay, uh, so I have a recommendation on the floor to whip these funds forward, moved by Cameron, seconded by Dillawatt. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor? Motion, or the recommendation is, is carried to council. All right, and, uh, item number seven F, council response to the auditors. A long, detailed briefing note, I'm becoming more and more concerned here all the time, and I want to, uh, indicate to council that I asked to have this whole package put in here because when I write this letter, I am not writing it as an individual. I am writing this letter and, and committing all of council to the response. Now, you see the draft that was sent last year, or, excuse me, the final version of the letter that was sent last year. And being asked basically the same two questions this year. Uh, and I have just one thing that I'd like to get out in the open before we start. And that is the January the eighth letter addressed to dear council, which I find offensive, but anyway. They say, in the last paragraph, second, second last paragraph, "These questions were previously provided in our audit planning letter but are now presented separately as a reminder to respond, which will assist us greatly in cre- in completing our audit engagement." Now, I'm not aware of any audit, any previous audit planning letter. Was there such a letter?
No, both letters came at the same time, sir.
Both letters came at the same time? So, that's this letter and the one on the back of it?
Yeah, there was.
Uh, there's made it, it's addressed to Patrick Sayo, Mayor?
Correct.
Oh, well, that's a little bit, that's misleading. Okay, all right, well, that clarifies something for me. Now, discussion, if any?
They want a separate letter addressing those two points.
Or they want, it's called in the accounting world, C-Y-A.
Okay, well, are, would they be liable?
Yes.
Legally liable?
Uh, yes. As we found out from the Enron situation.
Yes.
And, and the one thing that I, a couple of things in this engagement letter that I wanna point out to council, because councils have a wrong, m- many councils, and I'm not saying this one, many councils have a wrong impression of what an audit does. Remember that the audit only, the auditor only expresses an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements provided by management are free and clear of any material misstatement. That's all he does.
That's why I find it, I mean, uh, like, difficult to say, see his liability.
Well, they're covering themselves, and I guess if you look through your, through your, uh, your letter, the one of January a date, the eighth, addressed to myself, and you'll see that there's a response page on, titled number two. But then go to the page titled number three. Last paragraph at the bottom. Furthermore, because of the nature of fraud, including attempts at concealment through collusion and forgery, an audit designed and executed in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards may not detect a material misstatement due to fraud. And up on the next paragraph, "While effective controls reduce the likelihood that misstatements will occur and remain undetected, they do not eliminate that possibility." So, the auditor is telling you clearly, "We don't make any pretenses that we will find fraud." Now, the key to that is in the, in the first letter, where he asks the first question, "What oversight, if any, do you provide over management's processes for identifying and responding to fraud risk?" What oversight do you, as a council, provide over management processes? Do you know what the management processes are?
Pretty good, like, the thing.
Ask the, ask the staff, what their processes are. Okay. So, we can beat this horse to death all night, it's very lengthy. Uh, it, it has the whole effect of putting the, the responsibility back onto the hands of the elected officials. And there is a recommendation with the briefing note. Chair's looking for a mover, seconder to put the recommendation over. Councillor Hunter? Mr. Hunter moving. Councillor Cameron seconding. If the recommendation passes, I intend to spend some time working on this. I won't send the letter until you've seen the draft. Further discussion, if any? Hearing done. Those in favor of the recommendation? Recommendation is carried forward to council.
So, the council, uh, just aside, the council is officers, you're officers of the corporation?
Well, the mayor and the, yeah, the signing officers, the signing authorities are officers of the corporation. The rest of the council are directors of the corporation.
Okay, but equivalent to officers in a sense of liability?
Yep.
So you're jointly liable?
That's correct. Yep, and that's why I worry so much about it.
That's another responsibility.
Joint several liability? I know it is, weighs heavily.
I hope everybody understands what that means, I mean, not to you guys, but everybody in public too. Think about it.
Most of them don't, not a chance. Okay, moving to seven G, the cell phone policy. We have a briefing note recommending the adoption of a cell phone policy. Comes with a recommendation. And I'd like the mover and the second to put the recommendation forward before we get into discussion. Looking for a mover and a second, taking Counselor Hunter as the mover. And Mr. Robertson as the second. Now, discussion if any? A whole number of questions. Counselor Dilva first.
Is this for council two?
I think there's a cell phone allowance, clause ten.
Clause ten.
Why did I pick that clause?
Must be in favor of us, is it?
Where's the clause that refers to elected officials?
There is one.
That's not it.
I'm asking the question.
On eleven, on the publication of cell phones, council members are exempt. Oh, I'm sorry, just a moment. Cell phone numbers shall not be published with, with the exception, so the exception there indicates that we are.
No, well, the exception says that our numbers are.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's got nothing, I want to know, do I get thirty dollars a month? That's what I'm asking, are we, are we eligible for this? So through the C A O, I don't care where you.
The intent of this policy was basically for staff. The expense reimbursement policy that was passed recently for council outlines all of council's expenses that are eligible for reimbursement.
Is this one of them?
If, the way that the new policy states is that it's a lump sum number for each individual member. Five thousand for mayor, forty-five hundred, four thousand for deputy mayor, and thirty-five hundred each for counselors.
But that's not an expense allowance.
That's what was in the expense policy.
That's not an expense allowance, that's an honorary.
No, that's on top of your honorary.
What's that?
So that's on top of the honorary, it's in addition to.
And what is it again?
Yeah, it was, it was an expense, it was, the expense policy outlined that there would be an annual expense limit for each individual member on top of your honorary. And that, those, those items were outlined in what you could or couldn't. So if you wanted to submit cellphone instead of mileage or stationary or you had, you can submit any of those things under that expense policy up to the limit.
Up to thirty-five hundred for counselor.
Correct.
So we don't fall under this, this is just for staff?
This is for staff.
I don't like that. We don't have our own.
And the expense policy.
At a three thousand five hundred dollars. That's not calling your own. When they have a cell phone policy for staff, why isn't council part of that?
We've always kept staff and council separate, always been separate, policy for management over council.
I'm just asking the question, why aren't we, are we in on it or we're not? That's all I'm asking, you're saying we're not, it's just staff only.
This particular policy is not indicating expense reimbursement specifically. If you want to take these policies and embed them in the expense reimbursement policy, then you can do so. We just have to bring that policy back forward.
But I don't want to be in that thirty-five hundred dollars expense, like this is a cell phone policy of thirty dollars a month. That's all I'm saying. So why can't council put a bill in for thirty dollars a month towards us?
You can.
Well, but it's coming off our thirty-five hundred dollars.
If it's related to the expense policy, yes.
Some other people want in here, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so through the chair, so I think, so this policy applies to sort of like all, like all staff and.
All full-time staff.
All full-time staff, so do all full-time staff have an expense allowance?
No.
That this would apply to?
Not specifically, no.
So we would have that, we have one to, to offset things like a cell phone, but, but no one included in this has an expense policy.
Correct.
That would be intended to cover that, that third, well, I read it as fifty dollars a month, not thirty, but.
It's thirty.
Plus another.
No, the five dollars is for, if, if you have a township phone, then you're, it's a taxable benefit for five dollars per pay.
They're not together.
Well, wait a minute now, understand what the five is. If you have a township issued cellphone, you get T Ford.
Correct.
For five dollars a month as a taxable benefit.
Actually, just to correct, five dollars per pay period, it's a good.
Thank you. Well, the thing that I can't understand is why are we, why are we issuing township-issued cell phones to some people and not all? Or thirty dollars expense allowance if you hold your own phone, but not all people? Why wouldn't we do it either one way or the other? Either we issue cell phones to everybody, or we don't issue any. We give everybody a thirty dollar a month allowance for their own phone.
Through the chair, what we've found is that there are some new individuals who come in with a cellphone and they're on a specific plan, which they want to keep. So we're giving them an option to not have a township phone. They can use their own phone and we reimburse them for their, for their, for their basic plan. That's, that's the premise, so that they don't have to have two phones. They already have a personal cellphone, they don't want a new, a township cellphone. So they keep their own plan and then we just reimburse them, that's the difference, just giving them more options.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, so if you come in and you have your own plan, for instance, if it was a two-year contract or something.
Maybe it's a better plan than we can offer.
Right. Or it could be a family plan, or it could be. School boards went that way too, teachers have their option, keeping their own phone, or school boards buying one.
And does the school board reimburse you if you keep your own phone?
They pay a certain.
An allowance?
They keep their own phone and don't use theirs.
Okay, so there's, there's, okay, so there's two issues on the table here, I'm going to separate them. The first issue is, the first issue is to recommend the adoption of this policy to council. And we understand from the discussion that it applies only to staff. That's the first issue, so we'll deal with that issue. Then I'm going to come back to Counselor Dilva's issue. And it's a separate issue. And that is as it pertains, as it pertains to elected officials and, and our volunteers as well. Okay, so, does everybody, is everybody comfortable to go ahead and adopt the recommendation, knowing that it pertains only to staff for now? And then we'll deal with the separate, the other issue separately. All right, so I'm going to call the question on the recommendation that we have in front of us. Those in favor? All right, so that issue, those opposed? Okay, so, oh, now I'm in a bad spot. I've got to count, how many are in favor? Let's have it. Okay, so I have Hunter, Robertson, Cameron in favor and opposed. I've got Bradley, DeShan, and Dilva. And the mayor's got to make a decision here. And so the mayor's going to go opposed for now and the motion will fail. And the reason the mayor went opposed was because I have a lot of empathy for the issue raised by Counselor Dilva, which is the, the degree or the, or the manner in which council is expected, the elected officials are expected to deal with cell phones that all of them are our own. Well, let's clarify that. So through the C A O, to the treasurer, or however you want to place it, are there any township-issued cell phones to elected officials? Let's get that settled first.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
From what I understand, the mayor has an issued phone.
No, the mayor doesn't.
Well, there is a phone that we're paying for, for you at one point.
Say again?
We were paying for a cellphone for you, for a mayor's position.
Why? I've got my own phone and I've never had a phone.
Maybe the C A O, maybe the C A O can clear that up.
Okay, so we've got a problem here, you're paying for something that isn't being used.
I believe we discontinued that number now. Mr. Mayor, if I may, the previous mayor, prior to your tenure, had a township-issued cellphone, and that cellphone was offered to you when you were elected, and you declined and chose to use your own phone. And that's basically the end of that story. We maintained that number for a period of time in case people were calling the mayor to make sure that they didn't just get a blank answer. But I believe that phone number has now been discontinued.
Okay, all right, so, so as we stand at the present time, there's no township-issued cell phones to elected officials or volunteers, right? Okay, so now, that means that we're all carrying our own phones that we own. Now, we also understand that, that even though we own those phones and we use them for texting, that all of our texting and all of our data is accessible by the integrity commissioner. We all understand that, we have that, we have that responsibility, so we all know that.
Unless you hit it with a hammer.
Yes, that's right, but that's called destroying evidence.
But Hillary Clinton got away with it.
Mr. Brad, let's not go there, right now. Okay, so, now the question is, by what mechanism do I claim my thirty dollars a month? I'll put it a different way, by what mechanism does Counselor Dilva claim his thirty dollars a month? It obviously hasn't been being paid to us.
So, if, if, if I may, there is no current policy passed, so it wouldn't have been paid in the past. And, second of all, what that's through is the expense reimbursement policy as it stands right now.
And we don't, we do or we don't have a current expense reimbursement policy?
We do have a current expense reimbursement policy.
But it doesn't include. It doesn't specifically say that we can claim cell phones. Up to three thousand five hundred for council?
You can claim up to X amount of dollars per, per councillor, per deputy mayor, per mayor.
But that's all expenses in.
That is all expenses.
But it's limited. Is there any limit on the staff?
To, to the dollar, man.
Is there any limit on the staff?
With, with, with respect to?
Well, they can, they can only claim their thirty dollars a month per month.
That is, that is correct.
And, and, okay, all right, so now, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, the only, the only proper way of, way of, if people want to pay thirty dollars a month for their cellphone on council, we have to go back to our expense bylaw that we just passed and write that clause in there. The council can separate item in there that you're entitled to thirty dollars a month or you're entitled to a phone. It's in the expense bylaw now, but the mayor can have a phone, I believe, unless we took it out, I don't think.
Well, I can, I can still claim it under my thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, but if you want, if you don't want to take it out of, out of the thirty-five hundred, write a separate clause in, the same as this, but you're entitled to thirty dollars a month for a phone.
Do you see what the house was suggesting? Okay, so, and you're right on, we would have to go back, but we're, we're already told that, 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 okay, that expense reimbursement policy is in place, but it's, it's not, it doesn't specifically address itself to cell phones.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so what you're telling me really is that the expense reimbursement policy that's in place right now, I could claim my printer ink.
Yes.
I could claim my paper. Oh, and I threw away my receipts.
But you owe me a lot of three thousand.
Okay, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor?
So the way that I'm recollecting this is that, is that council was, it's a, it's a letter that, that was added in either H or I in the old, in the bylaw that we passed, and it, but it wasn't part of the thirty-five hundred and the four thousand and the five thousand. It was that each member of council was, was allowed one thousand dollars per device, per term of council, per term of council, or, or equal amounts of, of printer ink or paper or, or, or wear and tear or whatever. That's my recollection of the way that bylaw is written.
You're correct.
But I don't, I'm trying to remember, and I don't have it in front of me, that bylaw, if it was just for device, because I'm the one that wanted it written in for tablets. But it did say device or cellphone, I believe, there, but I don't think under our expenses it said anything about cell phones. That's the way that, that's the way I remember it, so, I could be, I could be wrong in that, though.
Okay, so as a way of resolving this, is, is council prepared to act upon Counselor Hunter's suggestion that we go back to our expense reimbursement policy and insert a clause that specifically addresses cell phones in a similar matter, manner to what we have in front of us? Okay, question, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through, through, through the chair, either the C A O or the, or the treasurer. Staff can claim, I just want a quick clarification here, staff can claim thirty dollars per pay period.
No, per month.
Per month, no, she said per pay period, which is ten dollars, I'm sorry, ten dollars a month, right?
Yeah, we don't claim, they don't claim anything, they're actually taxed as a taxable benefit of five dollars per pay period.
Right, but they, but they get to use a phone.
Correct.
But it's, which, which, just a moment, just a moment, that doesn't cost them anything.
Correct.
However, if they go to a conference, they can claim mileage, hotels, taxis, just like, just like, just like we can. Now, I understand on the other side of the fence for council, we're limited to thirty-five hundred dollars across the board.
That's the policy, now, staff.
I think I have to review the policy, Mr. Mayor.
Just through the chair, the staff is limited to budget, and there are several members in each department. So if you start to look at the budget for each department's training and conferences and break it out by staff member, it wouldn't be thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, yes, I, I understand that, but that's, that's their expense policy. I don't necessarily agree with that wording, but I think, I think what I'm, what I'm saying is I think we should review the council expense policy.
Okay, looking for other comments around the table? And then I'm going to have a real problem because we voted against this and I can't bring it back for, I can't bring it back in the same format.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if, if I may, you are entitled, within the same meeting, to ask for reconsideration.
I am entitled.
As long as you do it within the same meeting.
As long as I do it the same meeting, I have to call for a vote on reconsideration and I have to get a good, a good consensus. And I have to get a good consensus. Okay. So, let's go back to the concept of opening up our council reimbursement expense allowance policy and inserting a clause which will enable council members and volunteers to claim use of their cellphones at thirty dollars a month. Do we have consensus to do that? Oh, we don't. One, nodding of heads. So, one.
So, all volunteers?
Well, committee volunteers.
So, like...
Volunteers that have been appointed to committees.
So, all members of CDC, all events committees, all of the...
Okay, that's limited.
You know, you're stretching, you're stretching that a lot.
We need to keep it strictly to council.
Let's limit it to the more active. We can actually name them. The eight admin volunteers and the PW volunteers. She's nodding her head, no.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna take a liberty here, 'cause I'm, you know, not gonna be here very much longer.
You keep reminding us of that.
There needs to be some concept. And if I may, put Mr. Robertson and Mr. Bradley on the spot. Do you use your cellphone for township business?
No. Absolutely not, eh? And the question I've been not speaking to or bringing up is, nobody pays for usage on calls anymore. There used to be cellphones, you received a call, you paid, and if you made a call, you paid. The plans all now have unlimited calling. And why are we even doing this?
It's for the plan.
Well, so what? You got a cellphone.
We use the cellphone. But that plan is made for.
But you have a cellphone.
So if you use the cellphone...
You have a personal cellphone. I got one here. I pay every month for my cellphone, okay?
Correct.
Now, if I wanna make a call to Deb in the daytime, I call it. There's no charge for me to make that call. I'm paying that plan anyway.
That is correct.
So, why is the township gonna reimburse me to make a call to the office five times a month, or no times a month, or one time a month? No, I'm not paying anything.
Okay, but then why are we reimbursing the employees?
Exactly. I have the same question. Like, I haven't spoken it, but I'm thinking, like, what are we doing here with this?
If I may, again, sorry.
That'll explain why you voted against it.
Exactly. And secondly, let me finish. The only thing that I pay... Now, there's all kinds of them, as you well know. The only thing I personally pay for is data above a certain amount. Well, there's almost nothing you do that has data, unless you're gonna read the McLean's or the newspaper, or whatever, on your cell phone. Because you can iMessage, you can email, you can voicemail, you can talk on the phone, do everything. It's not data.
Don't say you can't go over...
So you're not paying anything for that.
Like, don't say you can go over. You can go over pretty quick, like if you use your iMaps and so on, so on.
No, I'm not suggesting you can, Counselor Dilabah. What I'm saying is that data... Data is kind of on the side, it's kind of an exception. Most of the kind of normal business I expect you're doing is phoning people, emailing, iMessaging, or whatever. Doesn't cut you any. It's a part of your plan. So if you've opted as a personal, a person, to go buy a cellphone and have a plan on it, you weren't thinking, well, oh, I'm gonna get some reimbursement from the township because I made a call to the office or whatever. So the other option could be, and this occurs in a lot of businesses, is that people have their own personal cellphone. The company wants to have a network. Their people have a network of communication and so on. So they provide them a company cellphone. And they carry two cellphones. And, you know, it's ringing. I have enough trouble handling one. They manage to get out two of them.
I got two.
So I don't know why... Have you got two?
Yeah, I've got company one in my house.
So, my daughter has two. My wife's cousin, who's a doctor, has two. I mean, it's a big problem.
Okay, so your big point is, why are we doing this?
Why are we doing this?
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and so, if I may, sort of counter that a little bit, is that, I mean, I choose to use my personal device. It is my personal device. But, I mean, there's no requirement for me to use it as council. I use it to make, you know, my council position easier. There's no requirement for anyone on staff to use their personal device. Just because they have a plan and willingly pay for it doesn't allow the township to say, hey, you know what, you got one, you got a good plan, then you can use it. There's no charge for that. I mean, if... There should be some sort of, you know, consideration given to individuals who use private devices.
I see that based on need, though. If you need, then because of your work activities, you need, you need a cellphone. You need a device to communicate with staff.
With us.
Yeah. With other councils and with staff.
Okay.
So that's a need. Well, if you say that that's a need, the township should provide you with a telephone. Pay for it, and so on, and so on. But not your own device.
But why not just reimburse them thirty bucks?
Well, there's no audit on it. How are you auditing? There's no audit, there's no privacy or anything else. You could get hacked and all the rest of it.
But, okay, but I think that if our manager determines that you as an employee, I need you as an employee to have, to be available to me and to have access to me.
And here's your company cellphone.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, but just a minute now, Jack. I mean, we... I'm sorry, Mr. Bradley. We put in mileage for mileage used. They don't supply us, the company doesn't.
No, because you have a car.
It's basically the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, except for order of magnitude.
Well, yes, yeah.
Counselor Hunter.
I think we're getting off the topic here altogether. We've had a policy in this township since cellphones come out pretty near. We're not giving cellphones to every single person that works for the township. Managers decide who needs to be on a 24/7 call basis. We're reimbursing them thirty dollars if they go to use their phone. They're saving us buying a phone for them and one thing or another. We're coming out ahead on thirty dollars a month payment. No question about it. I've had enough phones, I've had employees that have good phones, too. If we're... We gotta pay something 'cause somebody's gonna have a phone. We expect him to answer that phone 24/7. And that's what the managers are asking. Most of them are snowplow drivers, or rink ones that are on call if something goes madder at the rink. As far as carrying two, big portion of businesses, they all went to one phone. Ingredient, very few of the managers at Ingredient are carrying two phones. They're all carrying one phone. Brad's had one phone for five years.
They give them allowance for it?
They pay for the, they pay the whole plan for him.
Okay.
He just tells them what plan he wants and they pay the plan. It's his personal phone, it's his business phone. Rings 24/7. He shouldn't take a hammer to it a lot of the time. But that's the way the world's going now. We're connected. Our staff is expected to be on call 24/7, which I think is ridiculous a lot of the time, but that's what...
Yeah, that's what's expected.
Their numbers are published. Anybody can call them. I'm sure Deb could tell you lots at night. She's got calls likely at one o'clock in the morning because somebody's road wasn't plowed.
Okay.
I think it's a simple policy.
Okay, so, let's try to wind this thing down here. We understand, thank you very much for putting that in a nice perspective. You know, and that's, in a way, it's contrary to Mr. Bradley's point, but I think it's valid. The manager has determined that this employee has to have a cellphone. The guy's already got one. He's using it for company business to be available. Thirty bucks a month sounds reasonable. And I think you're right, we're ahead of the game. So that tells me that I'm gonna be asking, a little bit later on in the meeting, to revisit this motion. Alright, that's the first thing. Now, the second thing. Does this question of the thirty bucks a month, is it legitimate to apply that question or that issue to elected officials? Now, let's get the two volunteers out of it because they say that they don't use their cellphones for council business. And let's just apply the argument, or the discussion, to the elected officials. So, five guys here around the table. I'm gonna ask each one of you, do you think you want to revisit the council expense allowance and insert a clause so that we get paid thirty dollars a month for business use of our personally-owned cellphones? So the question was, do you think that we should reopen the policy so that you can be paid thirty dollars a month for the business use of your personally-owned cellphone? The answer is yes or no. I'm gonna go around the table quickly. Counselor Dilabah. Yes. Counselor Cameron.
Is there any deviation from this wording? My answer is this. If I have a personal device and I use it for township business, and I communicated, for instance, with you today, several times, on my personal device...
Don't remind me.
I know. On my personal device, I think there should be a reimbursement.
That's a yes.
That's a yes.
Yes. Counselor Hunter.
No.
Oh, this is interesting. I got a three-one at the present time. Doesn't matter how I vote.
I don't care how you vote. I just, I have a personal cellphone. I don't think anybody's gonna sit at this table and say if they don't get thirty dollars a month, they're gonna cancel their plan for their cellphone.
No, that's incorrect. And, you know, from my point of view, from my point of view, I probably use my cellphone more for council business than I do personal. But from my point of view, well, actually, from my point of view, I don't need that thirty bucks a month, but I just don't want to be treated differently than staff.
Unless, that's my...
What are you laughing about? I mean, the folks are as good as the people.
Would it help the Chair to know that there's nobody currently getting the thirty dollars per month?
What's that?
Would it help the Chair to know that there's nobody getting the thirty dollars a month currently?
But they soon will.
My question is, now that you've got knife in, how do you...
The policy hasn't been passed, so nobody's getting the thirty dollars. And a manager would have to delineate that there is a real issue or a real reason for this individual, as you've stated, to have the phone. So we have a choice of a township-paid phone. You're gonna pay the thirty dollars plus for a township-paid phone. Or you're gonna reimburse your member if you have a plan. But it's not, you know, like I say, it's not something where they're... They're using that phone for, and it's... The criteria for issuing a phone or an allowance is pretty stipulated within the policy.
Yeah.
So it's not like, oh, just 'cause you have a phone, you get thirty dollars. That's not...
No, I understand that.
How it works.
If I may, just one point that I was gonna make a little earlier, if I may, through you, Mr. Mayor, is that we've just heard how we're supposed to update our mobile technology and make sure that everybody out in the field can enter all their good information. And you can't do that without data plans. And I know that Mrs. Carruthers said you could. But the fact of the matter is, if you can't do it instantly, it won't get done. So to think that people will go back to a wifi and then upload the information...
No, not gonna happen. But eventually, I think, as a result of that service delivery view, I can see most of our employees having tablets.
Yeah, for sure.
Especially our public works guys. Okay. So, here's the way we're gonna proceed. First of all, I'm going to, because I think it's the right thing to do, I'm going to ask for permission to bring this recommendation back to a second vote, reconsideration. So, I'd like someone to put a motion on the floor that we reconsider this recommendation. Would someone do that, please? Counselor Hunter, do I have a second? Yes. Okay, so I have Counselor Cameron seconding the motion to reconsider. Now, I'm gonna call the question on the motion to reconsider. Those in favor of the motion to reconsider? Okay, yes. So I've got, you can vote.
No, I'm going to vote present.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm gonna call the motion to reconsider carried. By the way, in Canadian politics...
It's abstained, right?
Yes, it is. And abstentions are not allowed in municipal politics. Okay. So the motion to reconsider is carried. Now I'm going to call the question on the recommendation itself, which was originally, I'm gonna take the same mover and the same seconder, moved by Hunter and seconded by Robertson, that committee recommends that council adopt the cellphone policy as attached. Counselor Hunter has spoken to that, in opposition to Counselor Bradley. But I think we've heard both sides of the argument. We can make a decision. So, those in favor of the motion of the recommendation, please signify. One, two, three, four, five, six.
No, I'm present.
Mr. Bradley's present. All right, that motion is carried, you have your policy. Now I'm coming back to the question. Do we reopen the council expense reimbursement policy and insert a clause that will enable...
Don't get too technical now.
No, and insert a clause that will enable elected officials to claim the thirty dollars per month for the business use of their personally-owned cellphones? Those in favor? One, two? Oh, I gotta have a mover for that. A mover, a mover. Deputy Mayor Deschamps, a seconder, please. Counselor Cameron. Those in favor? One, two, three, four? Opposed of any? One. Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you very much for the work out. I really appreciate it. Okay. So we're moving on with item number seven H, addition of clerk's position to bylaw 2015-22. And as I see it, there's only one change here. Is that what I'm seeing? And there's a recommendation that council recommends, committee recommends that council amend Schedule B of the personnel policy bylaw 2015 as amended by bylaw 2016-83 to reflect the organization's current job classification. So, am I, we've got all the changes here in front of us? Are these correct? Why are you laughing?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, an inside joke? I feel left out.
Apparently, the Treasurer and the Clerk should sit together.
All right. Questions of any here? Hearing done. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Counselor Hunter moving. Counselor Cameron seconding. Those in favor? Motion is carried forward to council. The recommendation is carried forward to council. All right, now, I'm at item number seven I, which is draft capital budget, and is twenty after eight. And I'm in need of sustenance. Can we have a five-minute... Can we have a five-minute break, please? And then we'll proceed to seven I. Put on item number seven I. And we're gonna run this until about nine o'clock, three minutes. And I'm gonna ask if we can kind of wind up around nine. I have an early morning meeting again tomorrow morning. So... So, um. Now, how did, uh, well, yes, we do have a closed session, you're right. So, we'll run this until about five to nine, and then we'll go into the closed session. So, um, now, did, Mr. CIO, how did you want to proceed here?
Well, uh, I, I think the ma, the major items tonight are, are, is, is the capital, and, uh, if you, if everybody can turn to the last page in the pink section of the budget package.
The what, the pink page?
The, the last page in the pink section.
Okay, now, this one?
Yes.
Now, you in this binder here?
I'm in the binder.
Oh, I see, okay.
My apologies.
The last page in the pink section. Is this the one that's called funding analysis?
Everybody should have in front of them the twenty twenty draft capital projects funding analysis?
Yes, go ahead.
So, that is the listing of all the capital projects. So, the treasurer has the, uh, the capital funding analysis spreadsheet on, on the screen. So, as we, as, as we work through the, uh, the list of items, uh, whatever, um, changes may be, uh, made, then the, the treasurer will, uh, will insert those changes as, as we go, and we'll be able to, to work through the, uh, the capital projects.
Okay, now, key to this process is going to be source of funding. And the source of funding is in, uh, looking from left to right, is the second, third, fourth, and total fifth column, right? And then the sixth column tells us the amount that will have to come from current year taxation. All right, so, just to, just to get it in context before we start, we're looking to use one point nine million of current year funding, current year taxation mu, dollars, to fund this program.
That's correct.
That's correct? All right, now, how does that one point nine million that's going to come from current year taxation compare with the amount that came from current year taxation last year?
In your information item in your agenda package, there's a little chart that actually outlines the differences between, uh, the total capital, uh, from twenty twenty to twenty nineteen, differences in transfers from reserves in those two years. There's a little chart that will indicate the kind of differences of where, uh, we are compared to our twenty nineteen budget.
So, there's seven hundred and seventeen thousand more to come from current year taxation?
Correct.
Okay. Where did you get that, I'm sorry? On this first page here of the briefing note?
Yes.
Seven I.
Seven I? Last year, last year, we took one million one ninety-three from current year taxation. Uh, did you hear that, Counselor? Page seventy-four? Okay, so, um, that's a, quite a, a lot more. Uh, and what I can't recall from previous discussions was, uh, what our additional revenue is going to be. I'm, I'm trying to get a larger context before we start here. 'Cause I can't, uh, I can't remember what our revenue figures were, total, global.
Are you considering taxation revenue? We had an increase, but we have the offsetting, um, decrease in OMPF, so the difference in taxation revenues is, is about a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Because the increase in the taxation revenue. Yeah, the increase in, you would've seen that in the summary of, in your budget binder.
Now, Counsel, Mr. Bradley, can you tell me where to look?
It's on that same page, or that, sort of the briefing, uh, note page? It starts, it starts.
Oh, yes, total revenues have decreased by two ninety-three.
There's offsets, yeah.
Okay. From twenty nineteen budget revenues, the revenue decreases are in the following areas. Da-da-da-da-da-da. Okay.
Which means that the seven hundred thousand is all new money, basically?
Yeah. Now, the reason I don't, the reason I'm trying to get all this set, settled out ahead of time, uh, Mr. CIO, is because, uh, you can't look at these numbers, uh, in isolation, or these projects in isolation from the reality of where the dollars are gonna come from. I think we have to have some sort of a target in mind. But if you wanna start by outlining the merits of your projects, um, we can review the numbers and take those numbers sort of under advisement as we go through and look at the total budget picture. Is everybody agreeable to proceeding in that manner? Okay, so, you can re, review your projects and your estimated costs, and we'll, uh, understand your projects.
Certainly, I guess, uh, we, we can start with administration capital. So, the draft, uh, twenty twenty budget includes, uh, uh, plans for the, uh, for the upstairs.
Uh, thank you, uh, to the chair. The, uh, the upstairs renovation has been on the, uh, plan, in the planning stages for some time. Uh, I did ask for a better estimate of what the costs were gonna be this year, and I'm informed by the contractor that without a, a proper set of plans, it's almost impossible to do the estimate. He suggested that the plans, uh, for the renovation could be done, you know, to show the electrical and the HVAC and all the systems that are needed for between eight and ten thousand dollars, so that's included as a, as an expenditure there, as well, um, proposing to put in, uh, forty thousand dollars more into these reserves for that project to be completed down the road, so the, the, the actual dollars for that project, uh, don't change from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, proposing that same fifty thousand dollars to be put towards that project again in twenty twenty. Also, uh, the other, the other, uh, item on that would be the, uh, the town hall fence. We had talked about getting that done last year, and it was cut from the budget at the final, uh, at the final iteration, so I've had a better estimate done this year, have a stonemason in to look at and see what's required, and, uh, the estimate to get that work done is twenty-two thousand five hundred. The stone fence is deteriorating rapidly, uh, every season, uh, every winter season, more and more stones break away. Uh, we have been preserving those stones and setting them aside so that the stonemason can re-point and replace those ones that are broken and missing. Uh, but it, it really needs to be done this year.
Okay, so that's a pretty good, uh, description of that project. And, um, so the ten thousand would basically be to come to a plan which would enable us to come to a, a more definitive number?
Yes.
Okay.
The last, if I made the last plans that were done, uh, were actually done by former Counselor Peter Martin, um, but they were not building plans, they were concept plans.
Okay, so, without getting into the, the merits or discussion, I'll ask each one of the, of the members of the committee to kind of earmark these in your notes as to whether you think it's a goal or a, or a, or a potential cut, depending on, on, on revenue sources. So, on this, on these two, the revenue sources are all from current year taxation. Okay, so go ahead, uh, Mr. CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll ask the chief, you want, you wanna speak to your, uh, projects?
Sure. So, um, asking for twenty thousand dollars for, uh, additional studies at station two. We covered the, uh, the study that's going on now, depending on the direction of council, where we decide to go, there will need to be engineering done, geotechnical, uh, environmental studies done, no matter what we do, so I'd like to have twenty thousand set aside so we can, we can progress that work, uh, this year. Um, we've got the three hundred and forty-four thousand for the van run replacement. Uh, just under seventeen thousand to replace a piece of our Jaws of Life, uh, it's a cutter tool, so that would be the last piece that requires replacing at station two. Uh, originally, I had two pieces in there, but we got that grant from Jenny Jones for the, uh, program. And then the fifteen thousand work in progress, which we, uh, we discussed earlier in the meeting.
Okay, so, revenue sources again are fifteen whipped forward from last year, and seventy coming from reserves, um, a total of three eleven coming from current year taxation.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
I saw a study some time back, uh, station two, was done by, I think, Eastern Engineering and, uh, I'm not sure who else, but, but it's relatively thick. Is that study not sufficient, or?
Uh, I, I'm too down for that, because we've all about that study.
The, uh, the architects are taking, uh, that study and, and expand on it and getting some more detailed, uh, price.
Is that what the twenty would be for them?
Um, that would be what that fifteen, that we carried over, work in progress.
Oh, okay, so, so that would be to round out that previous study, completed or whatever?
Correct, and then, and then the, the twenty, uh, the, the architect has already forecasted that some additional studies would need to be done regardless of which direction.
What are they gonna study?
Well, um.
I mean.
If, if, if you, if you, if you're going new, you're gonna need that geotechnical. Uh, if you're, uh, if you're, if you're remaining, uh, with, with the existing, uh, do you remember one of the studies that was?
Was the choice related to the new versus the?
They, they, they are, they are.
Okay, so the way I see it is this, we're here right now, we've got the Eastern Engineer study, Eastern Engineering study as a base.
Correct.
Now, we've got a new, we've got a, a set, we've got a new architect on the scene that's gonna do another study. And he's going to give us two roads, renovation and new.
Correct.
And that's what we're gonna get for the fifteen. Once we've got the fifteen, and by the way, those two are gonna come with cost estimates, accurate cost estimates, probably class D level. All right, once we've got those two avenues in front of us, and we decide which way we're going subsequent, and we, then we make a decision. And then, after that decision is made, the chief is asking for twenty?
For?
To continue on this road?
Or the other.
Or the other. Is that the way I've gotta characterize?
That is correct.
Okay. So, the twenty, even if it gets included in this year's budget, is not going to be going anyplace until after we've made a decision on the results of what the fifteen showed us.
That is correct.
Everybody? Got it?
Yep.
Got it.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. CIO.
So, I'll just, uh, mention with respect to the rescue truck, there's just the seventy thousand as of right now from reserves, which was the, uh, the amount that was, was put in, in twenty nineteen specific for that replacement. We haven't, we, we, we haven't, uh, looked at taking anything else additional there this night.
Now, do we know what's gonna be left in that reserve account on that two seventy? Oh, no, only the seventy. Do we have, do we have more available in that, in that account? To the CIA, to the, to the clerk, to the, to the treasurer?
Certainly, through the chair, there is a, an updated reserve schedule in your agenda package.
Yes.
Um, and that, after the seventy thousand, uh, comes out, there'll be three hundred and sixty-four, down to the four thirty-one in that account.
Okay, now, can you tell me, uh, which accounts you're looking at?
I'm looking at the fire department vehicle account.
Okay, three, five, one, four? After the seventy comes out, you're estimating to be still three sixty-four left in?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Everybody seeing that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so go ahead then, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we'll move, we'll move on to, uh, storm, uh, storm water management. Lord, did you, did you wanna speak to those two?
Sure, okay, so for the, uh, sorry, Cardinal Drainage, um, basically, the, uh, issue at the end of the easement running, running into, uh, Locker Street has been identified. Um, we've got a recommendation from the superintendent to proceed with some shoring and, and sort of directing the flow of that, uh, towards the, uh, Gill Street drain, um, basically involved, uh, some additional pavement and some, uh, sloping to, to the drain to go over land and the installation of a, uh, weeping type tile that runs from a catch basin at the bottom down to the catch basin located on Gill Street to, uh, dump into the, the ravine.
Would that be on the west side then?
The west side, the ravine, yes.
Did that include more parking on the west side?
Um, it would extend the parking lot somewhat, I'm not sure if that would improve the parking at all. There would be, there, there, there would be some additional spots, I'm just not sure.
Well, this should be the full length.
Well, it would, it would, it would not be the full length of that side, because there's some restrictions with respect to the, uh, um, the, the current drainage that is set up in there, that we're, that we're liable to, that, that the engineers recommending that we do not disturb.
Now, there's a, there's a property owner that keeps phoning me about the flood. Does this solve his problem?
It should, it should mitigate it. That's the best I can tell you, it should, it, it, it should mitigate it. Um, however, if we, if we receive fifty mils of rain in twelve hours, th, th, there's not much in the way of, uh, um, systems that were, that are able to handle that.
So, it's rain versus the snow coming up?
Well, it, 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 it can be combinations, where, where we have a, um, a reasonably large rainfall plus snow melting, that typically causes that issue in that area.
So, so is this a, was this a design problem then, that we didn't put a catch basin in or something that we should have?
Uh, it is, it is, it is, no, it, it's nothing directly related to the arena, it's, it's in between, uh, properties. Some, so, some of it's grading, some of it's some, been some historical piecemealing. Through the chair.
I mean, uh, part of the design is designed to go through a sign of, kind of an above-ground filter system as well, because being a parking lot with oil dripping off vehicles and what have you, um, that has to actually be filtered, so there's a, in the design, it's kind of a natural filtering system to help skim some of that, uh, material that might come from vehicles and, before it goes into the ditch, so.
So, that, that, that pond is on the west side, and that's why you can't extend parking all the way down through that?
That's where that line goes. And, the second I?
Uh, the Johnstown, um, they have been doing surveying in Johnstown area in December, and my understanding is that you should be getting report into this month on what their findings are and to, to help find the direction that the flow should be set up for the drainage in Johnstown.
Now, is the seventy-five for the actual work?
Yes.
But we don't know at this point where the work is occurring?
Not a hundred percent, because a lot of the, they were, like I said, at the end of December actually out surveying, still running shots and what have you.
Lord, where is that in Johnstown? That we're doing this work?
That would be throughout Johnstown, I believe there's three drains exiting Johnstown.
East side, west side, and north. But where, Mary Street, uh, Sophia Street, where, like, where in Johnstown?
I believe one of the drains is Sophia, off Sophia and over to the, the St. Lawrence side, um, I can't think of the, the one way in.
So, it's, 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 uh, they, they've spent most of their time from, uh, Fourth Street South, looking at, looking at the drainage in that, in that area.
From the what?
From the Fourth Street.
Oh, Fourth Street. And then is this the one that goes down? South? Yeah, over to, towards Mary Street?
Well, all, all that area is being logged out.
For the talk, because it's going down to the bottom. I know, I'm talking, I, me too. Yeah, okay, thank you. So, at this point, you don't have a plan?
At, at, at this point, we do not have a, um, solid plan until we get, uh, until we get the, uh, the report back from the, from, from the surveyor.
So this could go up or it could go down.
I, I, I believe that there'll be certainly more than seventy, seventy-five thousand that would probably be required, but we, we, we would just max at it, do, do that portion, as much as we can do for that amount. Working away at it because it's a multi-year plan.
Yeah, okay, and then both of these projects would come out of current year taxation. Okay?
As proposed, yeah.
Now, nothing proposed for the waste disposal site. The next batch is recreation capital. And I'm just going through the quick, I see that all hundred and ninety-six thousand is from current year taxation, nothing coming from any other source.
That's correct.
Total of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, replacing a pickup truck, cardinal docks, cardinal pool filtration system, cardinal arena lighting, cardinal arena dehumidifier, and south center stolen fridge. Okay. Going to library?
I got one question, Mr. Mayor, please. Cardinal arena dehumidifier, fifteen thousand, we've had one sitting in the corner there from the old arena, where did it go to? When we, when we had our, our, when we had our little get together after we were sworn in, it was over in the corner, I asked about that to get it inside and get it checked out, so if we ever needed, we could use it. It was in the works department, the back corner in the parking lot, fenced in area.
So, yeah, so through, through the chair, I'm, I'm not sure where that is right, right, right at this particular moment.
Because that's a dehumidifier from the old arena.
The old cardinal arena?
Yes. Do you have anything about, Mr. Shaw?
Lord, is this the question?
There's, there's, there's a, a dehumidifier from the old cardinal arena that was in the corner of, of the, of the works department, parking lot inside. And it was from the old arena. And when we went through our little tour last year, I asked about it to get it inside and get it checked, so if we ever needed, we would have one. I'd like to know where it went. So, I have no idea.
I, I, I don't, I don't know what they're saying, but we'll check and see.
Could we look into it, thank you so much, thank you. No, but here's the point, if, if this piece of equipment has been sitting outside for the past six years, is it any likelihood that it's got any life left?
Well, tip side anyways, Mr. Mayor, it's installed up on the roof.
Oh, I see.
So I just wanted to get it inside, relooked at, get ready.
Question, Mr.?
Go ahead.
I'm just curious about, it says replace pickup truck, old port truck. Do we have a year, a year make and model on that?
In the notes, Mr. Mayor, that truck was from the port. It got attacked in two thousand and twelve.
Does it give the age, give the age of the truck?
I don't know the age of the truck, but they've had it since two thousand and twelve.
I think when we moved it over in the past, which was the one we bought, new one for Robert, or I think the two or eight, when we moved it over, four years, I think.
So.
I just wondered.
I'm, I'm just curious.
I, I, I'm, I'm going to say you're probably looking at the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine range. So it's about twelve years old. Okay, that, 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 thank you.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The cardinal pool system, filtration system, sorry. It's quite old, thirty years. And we have seventy thousand in the budget. Is that, that, what is this, what does that system consist of? Like a filter and a pump? Is that it? Are they not doing piping in there?
So, so, so through the chair, I, I, I don't have no answers at this time. So it, it might, it, it might be more valuable to, to pass over the recreation capital, continue on if the remainder and, and the next meeting, leave the manager, we have, we have facilities to be back and help regale into that in four years, seventy grand, but anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to note that the hundred and ninety-six ass comes entirely from current year taxation. And so we'll move now to public works, library has got nothing, we'll move to public works and there's four or five headings, equipment, bridges, culverts, gravel to surface, engineering and resurfacing. So, equipment first. So go ahead, Mr. CEO. I'll go ahead and deal with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, so there's a budgeting for a brush head for the high hull. Typically in the past, brush work with the high hole for clear brush along the canal and, and the like has been contracted out, typically through alts, I believe. Other contractors that have that type of equipment are oftentimes, they're hard to get, get hold of because they have committed trouble with other entities or, or townships where they have contracts. By purchasing this head for the township, it would give a lot more flexibility when the township could utilize that to do the brush work, so that can be done in the winter times, it falls through straightly in the summer and as more as time avails.
Next item?
Um, the next was the Kubota mower head replacement. The mower head for the road type mower has reached its life expectancy and repairs are major and cause a lot of downtime for that unit.
How old is it?
I'm not sure exactly, but typically they're about, have a lifespan of about three years. They're under heavy use in ditches and so forth and cutting down trees, small trees and what have you, so.
Two fifteen, Mr. Mayor. Twenty fifteen?
Yes.
Four years old.
This will be, this will be.
Your pardon?
This will be year five coming up.
Twenty, go ahead, next item?
So then we have truck number three replacement.
Says purchase two electronic sign.
Sorry, I, I can't really see that that well, so I've got a copy. Yes, purchase two electric sign boards. Last year, there was about ninety-five hundred dollars were spent to rent two sign boards for the, the culvert installation and so forth that was taken apart in the summertime. We like to purchase two of those units. The, these information signs will be used for construction projects, township events, information, general road information. They'll be equipped with radar, problem speed areas. They're listed at about nineteen hundred, sorry, ninety thousand five hundred dollars each.
But they are rentable, right?
Yes, they are.
Go ahead.
Good, so. Replace the Ford one point five ton truck. So looking to replace the one ton truck with a two ton dump truck, plow and side sander. We tend to replace this truck with a slightly larger truck to assign it to plow route that would include local roads in Spencerville, Johnstown and Cardinal. Taking the larger trucks off the routes with the smaller spots of plowing and make it more maneuverable and easier to get access to the smaller roads.
So we're replacing a one and a half ton with a two ton?
Yes.
And that's going to a smaller truck?
No, because right now they're using a full size plow truck. In, in some of the cases through some of the roads. So by getting this truck rather than having the smaller one ton doing some roads and then plow with the larger plows on the larger roads, they could go do it all with a two ton.
Go ahead.
The tandem axle plow, to replace, we're looking at truck number three replacement to change it up with a newer truck. It was a two thousand and five vintage international. And two nine, two thousand and nineteen, it was about seventeen thousand dollars repair on that vehicle.
Go ahead. That's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand and all coming from current year taxation.
Yes.
Okay, bridges and culverts. What's wrong with the Ventnor Bridge?
Well, the, the Ventnor Bridge, the new retaining, the new retaining wall to replace the Gideon stone baskets, deteriorated point that can't be repaired. Project replaced existing basket with precast blocks.
What's wrong with the baskets?
They have deteriorated to the point of not, not being able to repair them.
And what's wrong with the Riley Street retaining wall?
Well, apparently in two thousand and nineteen, due to the high water levels, the, the retaining wall is railroad tied, so it has actually affected the construction and the integrity of it. This project is basically looking to replace the railroad ties, wooden railroad ties with concrete during the low water time, probably in August.
Just refresh me, where's Riley Street?
Down by Kirbys and it's bad.
Down by?
In Wentzford.
In Wentzford, oh yes.
Bobby Kirbys, it's a dead end.
It goes down to the river, yes.
Dead end. First road out when you're going east towards Cardinal.
Just east of the.
On the river, and it is very, very bad. I've been down there two or three times.
And so fifty-three thousand to come, to come from the gas tax grants. And a twenty-seven five to come from taxation. Okay, go ahead now, now you're finally getting to what I want to see.
Okay, so the gravel to surface treatment roads, Latimer Road. Latimer Road is a joint project with North Grenville. Basically, that, that project was set to proceed last year, but North Grenville had pulled out of it and they're looking to, to start to begin this year.
Think I had noted about that one. Try to find it on the sheet here, Latimer, gravel to surface, boundary shared with North Grenville, two point four kilometers from Hindman to County Road twenty-two? But Latimer's east-west. Hindman's east-west and County Road twenty-two is more south.
Where, where Latimer Road ends, it kind of curves in, in, in itself with, with Hindman Road.
Oh, right around the end?
East end, yes.
At the east end?
Yeah, I don't, I never classified that over the Boundary Road, we just kept, I guess Hindman could wrap it around. Really part of Boundary Road really isn't, it was labeled right.
Well, is it actually a township?
Well, it's, it, it's kind of where Latimer, Boundary and Hindman sort of all intersect.
Okay, but the question then becomes is that the east-west section we would share with North Grenville. But I doubt very much whether we would share the north-south section at the far east end. They would not be wanting to pay for that. Is the one hundred and two thousand just for our share? Or is it based on half, or what's it based on?
It's based on half.
Okay, but the project as conceived by North Grenville, does it include that loop around to Hindman?
Mr. Mayor, it, it's Hindman Road that loops up to Latimer, not the other way.
Okay, so Hindman loops up?
Yep.
So the east-west section touches the end of Hindman. Oh, okay.
Okay, that's paved there.
That's paved.
Paved all the way around.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So it's just, it's just.
Okay, so.
A chunk at the end that's part of.
Yeah, right.
Granble and asphalt.
So that hundred and two is from gas tax grants and nothing from current year taxation. Okay, go ahead then, please.
So Miller Road last is also surface treated road. Gravel to surface treatment program scope of work would require minor ditching, cross culvert replacement, cross wedge base gravel and double surface treatment with microsurface in the next year.
Go ahead.
Chambers Road, it's also surface treated. Consider surface upgrade to surface treatment, revering farming activity before deciding to upgrade its surface. Minor scope of route work will require minor ditching, cross culvert replacement, cross wedge and base gravel and double surface treat with microsurface the next year.
And Coopland?
Coopland Road, gravel to surface treatment program upgrade requires base and gravel replacement, ditching and one culvert replacement.
Now, all of this gravel to surface treatment, are we piggybacking on the county project? Why not?
Well, the last project that we did jointly with the county was the resurfacing of Gooden, Curly and Duke Low and that didn't really turn out very well in product. So we, we, we've typically, our, our, our project that we did in-house, I think it turned out a little bit better with respect to the.
But we still, still contracted, right?
It is still contracted.
So it's the question of the contractor rather than the, rather than the administrator or the, or the supervisor. Did we not supervise the Cal- last county project with their own super, with their own supervision?
No, we did, we, we did not do contract admin over and above the county contracted admin. The whole, the whole point of going in with the county was that they were going to perform the contracted admin. We will build for that portion of the contracted admin.
The roof will not be pleased if I tell them that. You tell them, David. Go ahead with the next one.
I have one question there, on there when we're going through all this. Why are we looking at Chambers Road and then Coopland Road? Last year we were looking at the Coopland Road, added on to the Campbell Road going down. Why would we do, be doing a little section of Coopland Road there if we're not doing the Campbell Road leading up to it? Why do we jump away from the Campbell Road and go to the Chambers Road?
I, I'll, I'll attempt, I'll attempt to answer that, I think the, at least the, a portion of that road with the fire equipment, it, it just doesn't have a good enough base to, to, that, that it won't stand up to the surface treatment.
Yeah, Chamber, Campbell Road would.
The Campbell Road.
So what you're saying is that the traffic, farm equipment traffic on Campbell Road?
At lea, at least on that section right, 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 right near Ventnor.
Is going to require more than surface treatment?
Is going to require more than surface treatment.
And are you thinking that that's going to require hard talk?
I, I, I believe, I believe that that was what the, the road super was, was going to be lighting.
And you think the Chambers Road is ready?
That, that, that is, that is what the, that the road super is, is indicating.
I'm sure you are, it's any better because you've got heavy traffic, traffic on the Chambers Road.
Yes, very happy at the west end, especially. Some questions there, I see I'm past my deadline, but I want to finish up here and give you a chance to finish these last two items so that we can understand them. Go ahead with the next one.
Okay, so the next one is for engineering, survey costs, et cetera. This is involving the Jordan Rooney and Cedar Grove roads. This project will include road widening, aligning. This project will include road widening, alignment improvements, vertical and horizontal. Utility, possible utility relocations, Bell and Hydro, and general engineering parameters for the road project. Cross-section requirements, alignment improvements or relocation.
So is the four hundred thousand strictly for engineering and survey?
Yes.
Is there any reason why we would treat that, those three as one entity as opposed to breaking them up into three entities and doing some engineering and some construction in one year? This would be all engineering in one single year?
Some, some of it is actually for procurement of properties to straighten the roads where necessary, I believe. So, just as, as a overall project to get everything lined up and to write elevations and so forth. There is some accountability for that. In some sections like Cedar Grove with the curves and so forth, it might be worth looking at lining it out more rather than, than having the wide curves and et cetera.
I think for that kind of dollars, we would need to see it. And, and don't get me wrong, I think those two roads, those three roads need the attention. But I think we would need to see a, a full business case for that, for those. It's just my feeling. Mr. Robertson?
Was that part of an, an application that you made against the four oh one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That went nowhere. Yeah, I think we need a, we think we need a, a, a more wholesome, a more wholesome description of what we're doing there. Okay, go ahead with the last one, resurfacing?
Okay, so for resurfacing, they're proposing Blair Road. Hudson Crescent. Judy Place. Ventnor Road. Safford Road.
Is, is, excuse me, just a question for clarification, is Safford Road, do we, is that a, is that a?
Boundary Road.
Boundary Road? Like, I know, I know where it is, but is it part of our neighbors?
Should the chair, if I might, it's, it's a shared road with South Dundas.
Yes.
But there is a standing agreement that the Edward Ford Cardinal would take care of the sections of paint road there. Um, there's three sections in the agreement, I believe, and one of them gravel and two small sections of paint road.
So, okay, Deputy Mayor wants in, but I just want to clarify something for Mr. Cameron, because things have changed since the last term you were on council.
Yes, okay.
Okay, uh, previous council, Embersburg Cardinal was responsible for Rain Station Road.
Yes, yes.
Which was a boundary road.
Correct.
Shared with South Dundas.
Well, it really wasn't.
Yeah, yeah, and Dundas, South Dundas, township of South Dundas was responsible for Safford.
Yeah.
All right, so then during the term of the previous council, that got switched.
Okay.
We traded back the other way around. Now, it's our responsibility to look after Safford.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Now Deputy Mayor wants in?
Yeah. Um, the government grants and gas tax revenue line, is that, is that guaranteed? Or is that considering a top-up to, to gas tax yet again this year?
Through the chair, this isn't all gas tax, the combination of, of grants are gas tax and OCF. So we have the formula-based OCF money. We had a hundred and eighty-eight thousand last year that didn't get spent. And we have a hundred and ninety-some thousand again this year, uh, in twenty-twenty. Uh, so it's a combination of those two grants plus the gas tax.
Okay, can I get those three numbers again?
So one eighty-eight, seven fifty-four is your twenty-nineteen.
Gas?
OCF.
O-C-I-F?
The formula-based, and then we received a hundred and ninety-one, and I don't know the, sorry, I don't know the actual hundred dollars.
Sure.
Uh, not one ninety-one and change, uh, for twenty-twenty's allocation of formula-based OCF.
Go ahead.
And then the two sixty is what we'll be taking from gas tax.
Two?
The two hundred and sixty applied to Ventnor Road will be gas tax funds.
Thank you. Thank you.
All guaranteed funds, to answer your question.
Hold on, right?
Yeah. Okay, now, one thing I just wanted to point out, because earlier today, the, the clerk sent around this report. I just want members of council that may not have seen this, and you've got the electronic version, but this is the road needs study. The township road management plan that was done in twenty-sixteen. And this study was a very comprehensive study, and the, and the roads' sections were evaluated according to traffic. According to condition, according to speed, and there was three, I think, criteria. And the, the three tabs that I've got marked in green lay out the plans for the resurfacing program. Over a five-year program. Then they lay out the plans for a surface, resurfacing program. And then they lay out the plans for the asphalt program over about a four and five-year period. And the staff is following this plan, uh, to see these, um, these numbers on the thing. Now, it's not complete, and it doesn't follow this exactly. But I'm going to say that with the limited dollars that we spend, they're picking and choosing from this report. They're picking and choosing their priorities from this report. And you may want to, other members of council that haven't seen this may want to have a look at it. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Uh, looking at that report, um, and I may stand corrected on this, it seems to me the unit cost per kilometer uh, that they're using in that report are the ones we're using in the budget. And that's sixteen, and this is two thousand and twenty. Are those costs not gone up in the four-year?
I, I, I want to say that our actual per, per meter cost with last year's projects was something around a hundred and twenty-eight.
So we're running under, what's it?
That's, that's, and, and that was estimated at one thirty-five.
Is that because the plan anticipated increase, like inflationary increases or anything?
Well, it, it certainly, there's no doubt that it has some, some variables in it, uh, with, with respect to that. In, at twenty-sixteen, uh, numbers, it may very well have been a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and forty dollars a, a, a meter of what those costs were. So, actually, the last couple of years, we've actually seen it a little bit lower with respect to the.
I guess really the essence of my question is, we're confident that the numbers we're putting in for those, uh, resurfacing jobs are realistic. Like, we have a high degree of confidence.
I, I, I would say based on the, um, capital projects that were completed this year, with, with, with the exception of some additional base repairs that were required on, on Pittston Road, they, they, they were pretty, they were pretty close.
You're saying a hundred and twenty-five thousand? A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Hundred and thirty-five.
Sorry?
Hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to curtail this right now, uh, nine fifteen. I want to get to the closed session here quickly, and a couple of other things going on here. Now, one of the things that we have been doing is setting the next two budget meeting dates ahead of time. Um, no, I probably didn't. Oh, I didn't see that. I, I'm going to let that go.
So, so with respect to page two, that, that's, that's the water wastewater side, and we've already, we've already passed those letters.
We've already, okay.
We don't need to look at page two.
All right, so I think the first step should be to try to get two more budget meetings set up. So I'd like to see if we can do that first before we go into place belts. And, um, these are going to, I'm assuming that we're going to want evening meetings, is that correct? But we do know that we have, is it correct to say that we, well, no, you're still working, Mr. Counselor Delavosso. Mondays are, your Mondays are not the same as Counselor or Deputy Mayor Deschamps' Monday.
I can, if you give me notice, uh, Mr. Mayor can get at least afternoon, if that helps.
Okay, so let's see what we can do here. Um, today is the thirteenth. Uh, would it be possible to do a Monday afternoon on the twenty-seventh?
Yes, for me.
And Deputy Mayor?
Absolutely.
All right, so could we do a one o'clock start on the twenty-seventh?
I, I can't confirm it right now.
Okay, we'll put it in, we'll pencil it in.
Could you make it two?
Uh, two? Okay, and so that we'll pencil in as budget number two, budget meeting number two. And we'll run that meeting to something like five-ish. And then have the break, and the council meeting will be at six-thirty. All right, that's one in advance of where we are now. Let's see if we can find another date. And allowing a little bit of time for staff to catch their breath in between, we'd be up to around the week of the fourth. Now, I have to be careful that week, that's county council week. Um, so. Can we look at something like the sixth? And it's a Thursday, uh, we would have an evening meeting on the Thursday at six-thirty. Can I put that in as budget meeting number three?
February sixth, Mr. Mayor?
February sixth.
What time?
At six-thirty. Now, we could start earlier if, well, you're still working on Thursday afternoon.
I'm done, done at either two, two or, I can be, I can definitely.
Can we start earlier?
Like what time, Mr. Mayor?
What's your time?
Uh, five, I mean, it's not going to help you much.
Well, yes.
I can be here for five, five, that's no problem.
Okay, well, let's make that meeting five o'clock start to eight o'clock. All right, that's two meetings ahead. Now, I'm assuming staff is going to want to do, we've taken a quick overall, quick look at the capital. So now I'm assuming that you're going to bring back the operational budget? No? Seeing heads shake, no?
Well, I think, I, 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 I really think that the key, the, the key is starting to, um, whittle, whittle down those capital projects and, and how, uh, they're, they're, they're going to be funded. That, that is, that is the bulk of it, the, the operational part of the budget is, uh, is, is less than one percent.
Less than one percent what?
Of, of, of an increase from, from, from twenty-nineteen budget to twenty-twenty budget.
Okay, so then that means we have to have a, a, a clear and crisp look at our revenues then.
In your, in your.
Would you like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor? About the previous, uh, budget that package was given to us. We were eight hundred and fifty thousand roughly, that we were short, shortfall was about eight hundred and fifty thousand. About seven hundred and seventeen of that is in the capital side. So, and so you're looking at operational of a hundred and some odd. So, my personal view is, I think we should try and settle the capital side. That, you know, that's the nut that has to be cracked, I think. And then we can move, once that's, that's settled, we can move into the operations side.
Yes, but on all of this, you're predicating that on, we settle the capital and then we raise the money to fund it?
Well, we have to, that, that has to be part of the process, the decision process.
Well, I don't know how you can prioritize your capital.
Well, maybe not settle it, but get it to the point where we're satisfied with it, okay? With the projects. Some of these projects you have to look at and say, well, are we going to defer them or, you know, modify them or whatever?
If it isn't the decision as to whether you're going to go ahead with them or, or, or postpone them, isn't that a, isn't that a money decision?
Well, that gets, what are you going to whittle down? You're going to deal with that seven hundred thousand, how do you plan on dealing with that?
With a red pencil.
I understand that. In the next two meetings, we deal with that with a red pencil?
But I think you've got to have the revenue side clear in your head.
Well, it's, it's iterations, what I'm saying is, we've got to iterate several times, maybe more than twice. But, I mean, we've got to deal with, not the crack, it's the seven hundred and seventeen thousand, it's not the, I don't see the operational side as being the. I mean, okay, we may have to whittle out money from that side too, but it's the smaller of the two pots that have to be dealt with.
Okay, so what is the staff going to bring forward? I, I, I've got, personally, I've got to have a better understanding of revenues. Is, 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 is the revenue projections that, let me, let me rephrase that. Are the revenue projections that you're working with at the present time based on the twenty-nineteen tax rates?
Yes.
Okay, do we know those projected revenues? You gave that to us in our initial presentation, didn't you?
That is correct, yes, we don't, we know the, we know the revenue, taxation revenue based on the tax, twenty-nineteen tax rates applied to the twenty-twenty assessment.
Okay, so can we split, can we split our differences this way, Mr. Bradley? We'll start the present, the next budget meeting with a review of our revenues. A, a, a short review of our revenues, as you gave them to us originally. Twenty minutes, thirty minutes, and then we'll go back onto the capital thing.
I, I can cut that to about five.
Yeah, but you've got to allow me time for assimilation.
Okay.
It takes me longer to assimilate.
It only take me five minutes to show it to you.
You have to get ten.
Okay, we'll cut the, split the difference, ten minutes.
Okay, all right, so we're moving on?
Yes, we are. The revenue, the revenue, there's no flexibility, the revenue is the revenue. And so now we're going to say we're going to, we're going to increase taxes to cover these projects, or we're not, or whatever level, okay?
But.
Five percent, two percent, three percent.
Yeah, but that is always a possibility.
Yeah.
And cannot, so when you're doing your revenue figures, you, you must be at the stage where you know that one percent increase in the tax rate produces X dollars.
I do, yeah.
And it's what, about fifty, is it?
Fifty-five, fifty-five.
Fifty-five, I think, fifty-five to seven, something like that.
All right. Okay, all right, I'm moving on here. I'm at item number eight on the agenda, which is council inquiries or notices, a motion. Anybody, anything to bring forward?
Not I.
No, too late? Okay. All right, I'm about to move then to the mayor's report. And I would do the mayor's report if I had my sheet. Um, and I'm going to be fairly quick here. Um, I'm just going to signal the council and the committee right now that, and I've shared most of this with everybody. My concern about the water levels on the Great Lakes and the fact that almost for sure, we're going to have serious flooding this year. All of the Great Lakes are higher than they have been, and they're all starting twenty-twenty higher than they started twenty-nineteen. And I'm, I've asked the CIO this morning, can you assure me that we're going to have sandbags available? Can you assure me that we're going to have sand available? We're going to have to deliver to residents almost for sure. And I think that I'm at the point now where I'm going to ask the five riverfront mayors if they will issue a joint a notice to property owners on the St. Orange. And, uh, so that's just a quick thing. The Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus met on Thursday, Friday last week. We have our presentations ready for, uh, three or four delegations at the AMO, at the Roma Conference. Three or four things that are priority, the paramedic service, what is going to happen to the health units? What's going to happen to the Ontario Health teams? And, uh, more importantly, uh, what's going to happen with the EORN project? Reviewing with you. Um, now, at the Roma Conference, the township has been, uh, allocated a delegation to appear before Minister Mulrooney, Ministry of Transportation. Uh, and in our issue will be reimbursement of our four oh one, four sixteen fire calls. And Counselor Cameron has taken that file from me, he'll be making that presentation. And if you see the chart that I put on your tables tonight, you can see the list of, uh, delegations that we've got both as a township, the township. both as a township, the township delegation will be eleven o'clock on the Monday morning. These are fifteen-minute presentations, and then the warden also has a bit of a conflict there insofar as the, uh, United Counties, uh, delegation with Minister Clark is at eleven fifteen, almost overlapping. So, there'd be a problem there for me, but not for Counselor Cameron. There was a notice from the Ontario Energy Board about the next round of natural gas extension and expansion. We'll be following up with that with the Enbridge people at the, at the Roma Conference, and seeing where that is going to lead. But my understanding, and I haven't, I had a chance to review the briefing note that Deputy Clerk found for me today. But my understanding is that the, um, Energy Board has called for submissions. As you know, we did have standing at the Energy Board during the big, um, restructuring of the regulatory regime, and now we're circulated, uh, whether we're going to respond here or not. Moving quickly, on Thursday night, the Special Business and Community Connections will be holding a mix-and-mingle event at the, at the Mason, Masonic Hall, and I think it's five-thirty to seven-thirty. And I'll be making the same presentation that I made at the Prescott Sewer and Water, uh, wastewater plant meeting. And, uh, changed a few of the slides, but I just want to start getting the word out a little bit more about the Ontario Job Site Challenge. And, um, I've also been asked, and I don't know whether I've told the staff this or not, to make the full presentation to the Prescott Council. And I'm going to do this on February the third, sorry, it's the day of your meeting, the CDC meeting. Uh, but I've asked, and that's the best opportunity for me, but I think I can get there and do the presentation at the Prescott Council, and then get back for the rest of your meeting. Number six, I've asked the CIO to arrange a meeting with Will Plexman from, from Infrastructure Ontario concerning the land bank divestiture, and I think he's still working on that project. Uh, I've asked him to be present at the meeting, if we do get the meeting in Toronto. Uh, it might be easier for Plexman to meet us there than to come here. But part of what I'm going to be asking him to do is to come here. I think it's important that he speak to all of council, and that all of council understand, uh, the process. I'm going to tell them that we have a specific interest in that process, as we've illustrated to them in the motion that we sent to them. It's the process that we're interested in. Next item, BIC, the Bio-Industrial Innovation Centre, has hired an engineer, uh, to work with BIC. He has about a two-week block of time where he doesn't have a specific project for them. And during that little period of time before he gets working on their specific project, I've worked with, uh, Mr. Hendricks, Joe Hendricks, who's the BIC, uh, part-time manager here in Eastern Ontario. I've worked with him to find a job for that engineer. And basically, what I've got him doing is assessing our electrical demand, our existing electrical demand in our industrial park from each of our industrial park, um, manufacturers. What is their average monthly demand, what is their peak demand at the present time? What do they see their four- and five, five- and seven-year projections to be? I'm quite concerned that those two lines, the one from Morseburg and the one from Brockville, are reaching their capacity, because we're told that they're reaching their capacity. And we know that once they reach their capacity, there will be no more development in our industrial park. I'm very concerned that, because we know a giant tiger has told us that they are planning something in addition to their building by twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, something like that, which will require additional demand. Last thing I want happening is them prepared to make another three or fifty, sixty million dollar investment, and find out that there's no power available. So, I'm asking BIC, through this engineer, Mr., his name is Mr. George, to prepare a report that we can take to Hydro. Number eight on my list, um, you know that we've had interest from the company called Delee about, uh, purchasing some land force on County Road from us and County Road Two. We have the two little pieces there, and the middle piece was owned by Ben Can, I think you've all seen those little maps. And the deal with the Ben Can property, I think that closed, right?
It did, yeah.
It closed, and so we now own the centerpiece. The only piece we have left to put into effect is, and we're waiting, the clerk has, how shall I, they put the, put the question to Brisbane through John Edwards, the plant manager, still no word back there, I believe?
No.
Okay, so that's still a hanging chat, and do we have any current interest from Delee?
I haven't spoken to, uh, the folks from Mr. Rogerson since before Christmas, so I'll follow up with him in the next day or two, but.
So hopefully we can orchestrate this comes through just about right. And the last thing, at the Planning Advisory Committee meeting, no, I'll change that. At the County Planning Advisory Committee meeting, which was held last Tuesday, prior to the County Council Committee meeting, the Planning Advisory Committee reviewed the Edwardsburg Cardinal official plan and recommended that that plan be forwarded to County Council for approval. And so the plan, our, our official plan, will go before County Council on Thursday, the, whatever the date is, can't remember.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
What is it?
Twenty-third.
Twenty?
Third.
Third, will go before County Council with a recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee that it be approved as is. So, we're, we're, a nice project there. Now, um, just wondering, the clerk, uh, did you want to say anything more about, uh, your little project, uh, over down the road here? The, the, the land project?
Oh, that's actually on the agenda for Wednesday night, sir.
Okay, so that'll come up Wednesday night. Okay, that's my report then, are there any questions? No public here?
Do you update, Mr. Mayor, on the windmills that are sitting in the portyard?
Yes, the update is the following. The earliest court date that was available to the owner is February fourteen-fifteenth. The owner will be asking the court to, to find that the minister did not have the power to cancel a project. Now, we all know what that means, they'll appear in court, there'll be an adjournment, they'll adjourn for three months, then for six months, and then for eight months, and seven years from now, we may get an answer.
We'll get an answer whether, yeah, are we getting rent on it or anything?
Yeah, in the meantime, uh, the Port General Manager, I spoke to him about it today. He's been working with Logistech, because our contract is with Logistech. He's been working with Logistech to establish new rates over and above the contract rates that were additionally in place, because the contract has basically been superseded by this new development, the farm is canceled. And so, he has been working with Logistech to come to a new rate structure for all of that stuff to remain, uh, with us at our port. Now, his, one of his main criteria in his work with Logistech is that he wants his dock cleared, his wharf cleared by April the first, when the seaway opens again. With the exception of three or four big components that are very expensive to move. He wants the majority of his dock back, which means that Logistech and Belmar will have to move all of the other stuff into the uplands area. And then our uplands area will be totally, um, totally occupied for the remainder of the period that that stuff is here. Uh, I don't want to release any numbers here, because the, um, the, the, the rates are still in a state of flux between, and, and a state of negotiation between the Port General Manager and Logistech. They haven't come to a final agreements yet, uh, but Logistech is still telling the Port General Manager that they will guarantee the payments. Now, whether that means for three months, six months, twelve months, and extends to sixty months, we don't know. So that all remains to be seen. That answer that question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions? Okay, about to go on, uh, we have a closed session, so the Chair's looking for the motion to go into the closed session. Do you have it?
I have it.
I haven't got it.
I got it. Moved myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Deschamps. Committee of the whole proceed into closed session at nine thirty-eight PM in order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters of identifying individuals, including municipal or local board employees, present to the building department. And minutes of closed session dated November eleventh, twenty nineteen.
Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Close meeting does now adjourn, and the open meeting of the Committee of the Whole does now resume at ten sixteen PM.
Okay, ten sixteen PM, motion to rise from Committee of the Whole, those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, so now, I'm going to report out of the committee. So, reporting out from the committee, uh, the committee reviewed the minutes of the closed session dated November the eleventh, and Counselor Cameron will bring forward a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dillaboss. That Committee of the Whole approves the minutes of closed session dated November eleventh, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you very much, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, twenty. Yes, uh, yeah, but it's the closed session dated November the eleventh, twenty nineteen. Okay, so that motion is carried, now, reporting further from the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole, uh, discussed at length the position of the chief building official, and provided, uh, direction and guidance to the CIO. And now the Chair is looking for the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cameron, that the Committee of the Whole does now adjourn at ten seventeen PM.
Those in favor?
Wow.
Motion is carried.